Good evening, I'm Margaret Smith. I'm Chair of the Town of Los Gatos Planning Commission and I'm calling to order the meeting of Wednesday, October 8th, 2014. And Mr. Paulson, can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Erickson here. Commissioner Seauk.
Here.
Commissioner Badami.
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor.
Here.
Vice Chair Birch.
Here.
And Chair Smith.
Here. Could I ask you to join Commissioner Talisfor in the Pledge of Allegiance? Welcome, everyone. Our last meeting, which was two days ago, lasted until 12:30. But I'm making a commitment that we're all going to leave this room on the same day that we arrived. So, the Town of Los Gatos strongly encourages public participation in our hearings. It is the democratic way. There are several ways that you can address the commission. One way is this evening, you may speak on any item that is not on the agenda, and that's called the verbal communication period. So you fill out one of these cards that's in the back of the seat in front of you, and you can come up and you can tell us for three minutes anything that's on your mind that you want to bring to our attention. The second way is that there are agendized items this evening, and you can fill out a card and tell us which agenda item you want to speak on, and you will also be called upon during that time. The third way is in between meetings, you can submit any kind of written communication you would like for the Planning Commission on any item that you would like us to know about, and you can submit that in email or even drop it off at the Planning Commission Department. We have a packet prepared for us before every meeting, and all of the communications are included in that packet. This evening, we have an approval of minutes from September 24th. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes? Commissioner Erickson?
I'll move to approve the minutes of September 24th as distributed.
Thank you. And a second, Commissioner Talisfor?
And I'll second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We also have a written communication this evening. Ms. Purvetty, those are the desk items that are presented to us. And have all of the commissioners have an opportunity to read those desk items? You have, so, all right. Are there any requested continuances this evening, Mr. Paulson?
There are not.
Thank you. In between our regular meetings, members of the commission also sit on subcommittees, and when we do come together, they give us a report on anything that has transpired in their subcommittee. Are there any reports from any commissioners in the last 36 hours? Seeing none, thank you. That's because we met for a special meeting on Monday evening, so that's a very quick turnaround time. So now I come to the verbal communication period, and I do have one card, so I will call the person's name. I'm going to ask that he or she step right up to the podium, pull the microphone close to their mouth. They will have three minutes to speak, and when the yellow light goes on, that means that you're down to 30 seconds, and so we need to have you wrapping up. Please stay at the podium in case any of the commissioners have a question for you. So I'm going to call, I believe it's, is it Angela Donner?
Hello, I'm Angelia Donner. I'm a proud resident of the Almond Grove for the past 17 years.
Please speak right into the microphone.
For the past 17 years.
All right. And you have an overhead for us to look at?
I do.
All right, so you can take the microphone right out.
And I also have, pardon?
You can take the microphone right out of its holder.
He's going to click for me.
Okay, good.
So this is fine, it's better, easier for me, actually, right now.
All right, good, okay.
Also, you should have copies of the slides. So should I wait?
No.
I think so. All right, to start with, a very brief recap, very brief. First funds to figure out what to do about these decrepit streets and sidewalks was budgeted in 2007. Now it is actually going to happen. I am focusing on three key aspects. The material to be used, a summary of the costs between the two options, and a discussion of Phase 1. The town has, the town has three, five historical districts. The project includes the Almond Grove, which has 10 concrete streets, and the Broadway District, which has one. The other three districts are all asphalt. Stop right there. Ordinance 2165 and 2166, I believe we're done at the time that you finalize a separate handbook or guide for HPC. Stop, stop, stop. Okay, sorry, sorry, there goes my time. Okay, these ordinance say that the roads are concrete and should be repaired to maintain appearance as of 1976 or 1992. Well, the streets have been repaired where possible, and I'm sure that they do not look the same as they did even 38 years ago. From a very, very simple point of view, this is how I believe our town governance works, and I'll be getting back to this in just a moment. One of the major elements that has to be considered when looking at material choice is cost. A study was done and provided to the council in March of 2011, including street conditions and cost estimates, not only for the streets in the Almond Grove, but far above Glen Ridge as well as Broadway. The price estimates ranged from 1907 to 1807. The remainder of my cost discussion tonight only deals with information from the executive summary of that report, which is online, and in the council records. Even though I had a physical copy of the final report in my hand, in the clerk's office one week ago today and requested a copy, I've yet to receive it. Mr. Capurso was pleased to announce that he was able to do, oh, I'm sorry, I got messed up at the beginning. If I could start my three minutes over again.
Well, you know, we're not-
Mr. Capurso was pleased to announce that he was able to do all of the concrete streets. I'm sorry.
Okay, so stay right there, okay? So stay there, because we're going to talk to you, okay?
Okay.
All right, so we are all very familiar with what's going to happen in the Almond Grove, and we were very happy to see it in our capital improvement program, that it actually had been budgeted. Many of us travel those streets often, and I myself lived on those streets for many years, so, all right. So we know that what you're interested in, as I believe, is what's going to happen. Is that correct?
That actually is not correct. I spent three minutes with the council last evening going over the outreach issues that I have. These issues specifically deal with concrete versus asphalt, and the cost estimates that have been provided, not only, I believe, to the town, I know have been provided to the town, as well as to the residents, and how they don't make sense.
Okay, all right. So you've alerted us to this, and now we know that we can ask staff to follow up with these issues, and staff probably already is because of the council appearance you made. So maybe-
All of this information this evening is new compared to what I did last night, but it should not be new to-
But it's going to be submitted now to staff on a formal basis, and Ms. Purvetty, what would be the next step of the staff?
The next step is that we will provide this information to our colleagues at the Parks and Public Works Department. We'd also like to follow up with you to find out what document it is that you're still waiting for from our clerk, so we can make sure that we can get that to you in a timely manner. But Parks and Public Works is the lead on this effort. I saw your presentation last night, and I also work in the town manager's office, so you have also gotten our attention, and we look forward to working with you on this project.
May I respectfully request that you meet with me and let me give you all these materials before you meet with PPW or with PPW? They are all new people, and we're talking about some significant number of questions that I don't believe they have the background on. Thank you very much.
Yes, I'll provide you my card. Thank you.
And thank you for speaking. Now, is this another person who wants to talk during verbal communication? Go ahead and hand in your card, and then just go up there. Okay, so please just identify yourself, and you know you have three minutes.
Thank you very much, I'm Mary Roach. I've lived in the area for 30 years. When I arrived in Los Gatos, I was so pleased because it was Tree City, USA, you know, of America. It was wonderful. I haven't seen that plaque in a long, long time now. But I'm seeing more and more trees going away, less and less open space, and I keep looking at our beautiful seal, I'm seeing less and less of the hills. The development is, it's going to happen, but I keep seeing higher buildings, less and less views of the hills, closed-in streets, you know, more of a chute-like, and I keep reflecting back to town, not city, it's town of Los Gatos. We don't want to be in, you know, just chutes, because if buildings like the CVS is built right out there at the street, it just blocks it in and it closes it. I find that very unappealing, whether I'm driving or walking, and I walk in that area every single day, it seems. And, you know, and the tree, there is a memorial tree at that intersection of Los Gatos Boulevard and Los Gatos Almeden Road. It is an old oak tree. It has a beautiful bronze plaque to a lady at the base of it, and it's being allowed to be V-cut and just butchered time after time, and I'm going, Tree City, Tree City, who's taking care of the tree? Why can't we get the trees taken care of? I saw trees planted behind the facility for the Los Gatos Police Division. Those trees behind there are dying for lack of water because the system doesn't work for the automated, and I've spoken to the police, and it's Tree City? City is wrong, town, not a town, not a Tree City anymore. And two rows of trees in any development do not, to my mind, reflect in our orchard, our vineyard heritage, and the open spaces that I moved here for, and the rural atmosphere. I'm seeing more and more development. Yes, I don't like the North Forty, all those housing and whatnot, they're going to be shooting those kids down, right down the street I live on in Cherry Blossom. You know, they're going to be going down Los Gatos Boulevard or down Cherry Blossom to hit Blossom Hill Elementary School. We already have traffic circles and things to reduce the speed, and it's thousands, it's not thousands, but hundreds of kids walk that street down to this elementary school every day. And I'm just saying, yeah, we have to have development, we need additional housing, but why do we have everything have to be right out of the street to create chutes? Why do we have to keep butchering our trees, losing our trees, losing our open space when people love open spaces, and that's why I moved here? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Roach, don't leave. Okay, there we go. Commissioner Birch?
I'm very familiar with the tree that you mentioned on Los Gatos Boulevard and Almeden.
Yes, isn't it lovely?
It's a wonderful tree, so I'm curious, when you're talking about the V-cutting, was that for the power lines when they were going through and doing the trees? Or were they doing an additional trimming of the trees that did that, the V-cut?
It is done for the power lines, that could be so easily redirected around the tree. I mean, if it's a memorial tree, we should give it memorial treatment, in my opinion. But yes, as I see it, it is, for the clearance of 10 feet around that, makes it hideous.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't somebody else out cutting it, so, okay, thank you.
Oh, gosh, well, I'm not out there watching all the time, but I hope not.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other questions. Ms. Roach, thank you for taking the time to talk with us this evening.
Thank you for listening.
All right. Mr. Russell, you're up next.
Good evening, Jim Russell, Pine Avenue. I'll take 30 seconds. I just want to commend the seven commissioners for the amount of time that they have been putting into a lot of very difficult questions the last several weeks. For those of us that sit out here, this seems to me to be about the fourth meeting in the last two weeks, the second this week. Generally, those meetings have been going on five or six hours. It's a very thankless job, and I think all of us in the town appreciate, or should appreciate, your voluntary efforts.
Well, thank you, Mr. Russell, so we'll thank you for coming up and thanking us. Thank you, thank you. All right. Now, we have gone through our verbal communication, so the next thing on our calendar, on our agenda this evening is called our consent calendar. We do have one item on the consent calendar this evening. It's a continued item, conditional use permit U-14013, requesting approval to operate a minor restaurant called Jersey's Mike Subs on property located at 15527 Union Avenue. I do not have any cards for anyone who wishes to have the item removed from consent, and I don't see any commissioner stepping forward either, so may I have a motion to approve the item on the consent calendar? Commissioner Birch?
I'll make a motion to approve conditional use permit application U-14013, 15527 Union Avenue, the approval to operate a turnover restaurant.
Commissioner Talisfor?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor? Aye. None opposed, thank you. There are no continued public hearings this evening. So now we will move on to new public hearings called Agenda Item 2. This is an opportunity for the Planning Commission to receive public testimony and discuss potential changes to the town code for the establishment and use of planned development overlay zoning designations. And in conjunction with the public testimony, we will have a discussion this evening among the commissioners, and we will also be talking during that time about the town's community benefit and infill policies. I want to remind everyone that this is not a public hearing on a specific amendment to the town zoning code, nor is it a public hearing on a specific project. And I understand, sir, that you are going to identify yourself and proceed to give us the staff report.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Erwin Erdonius with the Community Development Department presenting your staff report this evening. First off, the item before the Planning Commission this evening is a referral from the town council from June 2 of this year. The matter actually resulted from a council study session from 2013, a study item from 2013, based on community concerns regarding the use of the planned development overlay zone. And in November of 2013, council basically had discussions and appointed an ad hoc committee to study the use of planned development overlay zoning in the town's development process. On November 4 of 2013, the council actually directed staff and the ad hoc committee, which is two members of the council, to basically review the intent of the zoning ordinance regarding the use of planned developments, and to clarify also the town's infill policy, as well as the consistency between the general plan and the zoning ordinance, and to really consider the use of planned developments for specific zones. And you see up on the slide here the actual direction from the council. Then on June 2 of this year, the ad hoc committee that was formed actually reported back to council with a recommended proposal regarding the planned development overlay zone. Council had discussions with that, and the council basically directed the matter, directed the matter back to the Planning Commission so that the commission can hold additional public hearings and have a community outreach, and is basically asking the commission to analyze the ad hoc committee's draft and to provide a recommendation back to council. In terms of the background for the planned development overlay zoning, the existing planned development section basically notes the following intent and purpose. It's to provide for alternate uses and developments more consistent with the site characteristics than are allowed in other zones, and to create an optimum quantity and use of open space and encourage good design. The purpose also states further that the PD zone permits establishments of a single use, or the integration of several uses not ordinarily possible only if the use of the development is in compliance with a complete development plan, showing relationships of the use or uses to each other, to the district as a whole, and to the surrounding areas. This is also included in your packet. In terms of the planned development criteria in the ordinance, it's only eligible for properties that are over 40,000 square feet unless the proposed development is a low-income senior housing project where no minimum lot size is established. The town has had a 50-year history of approving planned developments, and many residents in the town currently live in planned developments. There's 75 existing approved planned development projects in town, in your packet as part of one of the attachments for the staff reports that went to council, are maps as well as lists of those developments. In terms of the types of uses and projects, they vary from various commercial and residential projects, they vary in terms of uses, densities, and intensities. And then in terms of the current direction from council, council has directed that any proposed redevelopment of the existing or vacant automobile dealership sites be reviewed by the town as planned developments. Related to the planned development ordinance, in 1993, the town council adopted an infill policy, and that policy basically requires that the planned development process only be used if it contributes to the further development of surrounding neighborhoods, eliminates blight, and does not detract from the existing quality of life in the town. It also requires that the planned developments be designed in context with neighborhoods and the surrounding zoning, and that there be a demonstrated benefit of a PD through excellence in design. Related to the infill policy in terms of the community benefit, in 2002, the town council formally adopted a community benefit policy. And then the policy specifically defines community benefit as an offering of benefit to the town proposed by the applicant in addition to the standard mitigation measures required by the town that overrides certain negative impacts resulting from the infill project or projects that generate more than five peak hour trips. These would be a benefit or an offering that would not be considered part of the California Environmental Quality Act mitigations. Earlier in this year, as part of the council's review of the current traffic impact policy, council removed the community benefit considerations from that policy. In terms of the work of the ad hoc committee that we spoke about earlier, the ad hoc committee proposal that's included in your packet would narrow the use of the proposed planned development to the purpose and intent of protecting and preserving hillsides, natural and historic resources, and ridgelines, trees, creeks, riparian corridors, and open space. Currently, the PD ordinance would be allowed to be used townwide. The ad hoc committee changes would basically limit it to the items you see here on the screen. The ad hoc committee also proposes to eliminate the 40,000 square foot minimum lot size for the use of the planned developments. Also included in the ad hoc committee proposal are specific criteria that the planned developments would only be allowed on sites that meet one of these four criteria. So again, there would be sites that are included in the hillside development standards, and there's a map that's provided, with a site within a historic preservation overlay zone, or a site which contains a tree or stand of trees that constitutes an important community resource. And the ad hoc committee was also making recommendations about a future tree ordinance. And then the fourth item would be a site which has a stream channel or creek that supports a riparian area and vegetation. In terms of the task before you this evening, staff is suggesting that you focus your discussion on, after, this is after receiving public testimony, on how the PD zone should be modified, if at all, to meet the town's needs and the vision of the general plan, and how the town's infill and community benefit policies work in light of the current general plan and the planned development overlay zones, and should these policies be modified, and in what matter, or rescinded? In terms of suggested actions, as I noted, staff is recommending that you receive public testimony this evening. You review and consider the potential modifications, if any, of the PD zone and the infill policy and community benefit policies, and then ask, council asks, formulate a recommendation back to council regarding the ad hoc committee's proposed. And that concludes staff's presentation, also available for comments. We also have an illustration showing the extent of the PD zoning in town. So this illustration basically shows all the planned developments in town and shows you sort of the geographic distribution. I can leave that up there. And as a note, I'm available for questions or comments.
Okay, so we'll have Commissioner Talisfor, Commissioner Erickson, and then Commissioner Seauk.
Just a quick question, thank you for your presentation, by the way. Regarding the infill projects, there was a slide up there, 1993 infill policy, and there were three areas that you covered. Did you just shorthand those, because I have a list of six? For the sake of paper, or?
Yes, what you had was, the second bullet actually had additional information there regarding, as part of the neighborhood compatibility, there were things like setbacks and density. So in your packet, you have actually the complete list.
Right, so this, I mean, this is the list we should be referring to.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you very much, that clears it up. Thanks.
Commissioner Erickson?
So presumably, the impetus for this is to address some concerns and solve some problems. So could you review very explicitly for us the concerns that are problems, the concerns that are attempting to be addressed, and are the problems that are attempting to be solved, so we have a clear understanding of why we're doing this, why we're considering this?
Certainly. In your staff report, there was basically discussion regarding sort of community reaction to certain high-profile projects within the last four years, where you had community comments regarding the use of planned developments, possibly allowing additional density, maybe allowing smaller lot sizes on properties, and basically making projects financially feasible at the expense of the community.
Go ahead.
So if I synthesize what you just said, there were two concerns, density and, concerns about density and concerns about small lot sizes.
And also sort of compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods and uses.
Okay, that's three.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, just want to be sure, so we understand, we have to know what problem, for me, I would have to know what problems we're trying to address before I could understand whether the proposed solutions were contributing to solving those problems. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Seauk?
So what I'd like to do is, I'd like to get a little bit more information on the history of this. The 40,000 square foot requirement that is being proposed to be removed, what's the magic number about the 40,000? Do you-
It's a net acre, after usually dedications.
Okay. And then what about the auto dealerships? What was the thinking behind that?
I believe that was a way for the town to basically make sure that there was appropriate review. A planned development requires not only review by the Planning Commission and a recommendation to council, but then the council recommendation. So it was a way for the town to be able to make sure that any proposed use that was going to replace an existing automobile dealership was going to be something that was compatible with the community.
So with what's proposed by the ad hoc committee, would all, I believe there's still a couple of auto dealerships that we have, would that still remain? That if those should be rebuilt or renovated, that it would still be a PD?
In a literal reading of the ad hoc committee proposal, staff believes that it would not require that.
Okay, and one last question, if I may. This diagram that you provided was great. Do you happen to have another diagram that shows what would not be allowable if we were to move forward with this?
Staff hasn't done that analysis, but the big thing would be that the hillside areas are mainly the southeastern portions of the town right here, and there's also maybe some properties here that were classified as hillsides when the hillside standards were adopted. So the bulk of the town would not be eligible for planned development.
The bulk, okay. And then one last question, it just reminded me, in our hillside design guidelines, is there any mention of planned developments at all?
I don't believe they are in the hillside guidelines, but in the hillside specific plan, there's a requirement that if someone were to subdivide for four lots or more, that they would have to do it through a planned development process.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
The ad hoc committee is two council people?
It was two council members with the assistance of the community development director and the town attorney.
And that ad hoc committee then reported to the full council?
Yes, on June 2 of this year.
And the council then, as opposed to the ad hoc committee, referred it back to us?
Yes. There was discussion in council about the fact that there wasn't adequate community involvement or outreach, and so this was really thought of as being the very first step to receive additional community input.
Was the suggestion that one meeting would satisfy that request for more community input?
I don't believe there was a limit, I was at the meeting, and I don't believe there was a member of council that limited it to one meeting.
I may be wrong, but it does seem to me that the council has perhaps- I may be wrong, but it does seem to me that the council has perhaps done more work on this than I think we have. And so you don't have any reason why we couldn't have more than one meeting on this.
It was basically just referred to the commission, but again, it's certainly the purview of the commission if it thought it needed more time.
Thank you.
I just want to ask one question, and that is, as I recall reading, the general plan committee has in the past undertaken a review of planned developments. Is that true?
When there is an associated general plan amendment, yes.
All right. Commissioner Talisfor and Commissioner Badami.
Just to give a little more background context to this, the PD, so it was created basically for hillside developments. And, correct?
No, I don't believe that was the intent. I believe, as we noted earlier with the slide, that, we did a little bit of research far back as 87, the intent was to be able to design with the characteristics of a particular site to actually get excellence in design and to maximize open space. I don't believe it was limited to hillside areas.
It was not. Oh. Okay. All right, I thought it was. Thank you.
Commissioner Badami.
Chair Smith, you asked my question, and it was answered, so thank you.
Commissioner Birch.
For the clarification of anyone that may not be overly familiar with a planned development, could you give us a couple examples of, it said several uses, usually not possible? I think we are familiar with that, having heard it, but could you perhaps give us a couple items that are typically not allowed, that would be allowed under a PD?
I can give you a couple of examples that I've worked on. So I was the project planner for the Summer Hill Development down on Blossom Hill Road near Union. So that's a project where the town was allowing development of about 20 acres. We preserved about 90 acres of open space for the Heights Open Space. There was an interpretive exhibit that was put out there. There was a preservation of the barn, the preservation of the historic home. So typically, those aren't things that would be normally allowed in the hillside area. But the, so that was a project that had excellence in design. Also, I was a project planner for the hotel just down the street, in terms of some of the combinations of uses. And for that particular project, the applicant actually was proposing reduced setbacks, but in exchange for that, it was a design that was going to be something that the town could be proud of. And so that's a particular use that wouldn't have been allowed just with the standard C2 zoning.
Yes. So one other question, and again, some of this is just for everyone else's knowledge. We understand the town has a number of historic zones, but in what is being proposed, we also have a number of, it's not a zone, but it's maybe a large lot that a pre-1941 residence resides on. And based on the town description of what we consider to be a historic item, that would fall under. Would this apply to that type of a lot? While it's not in a zone, it is considered historic by the town.
My understanding, again, and this is just a strict reading of what came out of the ad hoc committee, was that those properties that had historic structures but did not have the official overlay zoning for historic, that landmark historic preservation overlay zoning, would not be eligible for a planned development.
Okay, thank you.
And then if I could ask you to go back and talk again about community benefit, and so that is no longer part of our deliberation, is that what you told me?
As part of the traffic impact policy, the council deleted that from the existing traffic impact policy. However, when you do have projects moving forward, for infill, there is still the mention of community benefit.
That's the point that I wanted to make, so that, but so infill, we still can look to community benefit mitigations.
You have had projects, yes, where applicants have volunteered a community benefit.
Correct, correct. Only on a volunteer basis. No, we understand that, but I just wanted to make sure that we haven't totally done away with community benefit.
And that's part of the referral from council to you, is, you know, does anything need to be done with that, within the context of planned developments?
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell.
You had a slide on community benefit. Could you go back to that? Okay, what I'm interested in is, during the course of a number of years, we've used community benefit, I think, for several different things. At one point, community benefit was incomprehensible when we started putting lights on bridges and things like that. That definition, though, says, in addition to standard mitigation, override certain negative impacts. My recollection is that sometimes we were using community benefits that didn't override anything. They were just community, arguably, community benefit. Will that application be different?
It really is up to the decision-making body to determine whether or not the community benefit that's proposed is adequate with the project. The applicant basically proffers up what they believe are community benefits, so you've had.
But the definition says, and we've not, to my knowledge, have not used this, that the community benefits will override certain negative impacts. That would be a lot easier to do, and certainly what we've accepted in the past as community benefits would not have satisfied that. And yet, we've done it for years. So I'm just curious as to how that occurred.
It hasn't been defined, and so the only thing I can liken it to is when you have an EIR, and a council adopts a statement overriding considerations that outweigh whatever the negative impacts are. It really is up to that decision-making body to determine what aspects of the project override those impacts. And it's part of the opinions of the.
Just one more question. Isn't the project that overrides, is the community benefit that overrides, correct?
Right, that's correct.
All right, so that's a 2002 community benefit policy, right? So that's now in existence.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Birch. So to be very clear, that the recommendation is that this would not exist anymore except for infill projects?
No, as part of the task the council had you, having you undertake this evening, is actually to review the PD ordinance. And they're also referring the infill policy, and then within the infill policy, it has the community benefit section. And so they're asking you to make a recommendation back to them regarding the PD ordinance, and if applicable, weigh in also on the infill policy and the community benefit policy.
Madam Chair, if I may, I know this is a lot for our commission to digest on top of everything else that you've been working on lately. Really, the matter is the appropriate use of planned development zoning. So the first question is, to what extent should our planned development rules, or the rules under which we wish to use planned development zoning, change? The ad hoc committee has some particular recommendations for your consideration, recognizing that in the use of the planned development zone, there's been the opportunity for the town's decision-making bodies to interpret community benefit as well as our own infill policy. And so we just wanted to raise all three policy issues to your attention because of their interrelationship. You may find that your purview is best focused on just the PD, and maybe you want the council only to consider the other two. So that, so you don't feel, I don't want you to feel burdened by having to unravel all of this if you feel that really you want to focus on one or the other. But we wanted to open it up to the broader conversation because of the interrelationships and the fact that now our general plan has been updated, so some of this is in existing policy language. So we wanted you to have the benefit of the ability to speak more broadly, but if you wish to speak more focused, you may as well. Thank you.
All right, so, yes.
As far as procedure tonight.
Yes, I was just going to go through that.
Thank you.
Okay. So if we have concluded initial questions of staff, then what I would like to do is to take the public testimony. And I think that may actually generate some additional questions and insights. We might receive some insights from the public perhaps we hadn't thought of yet. And then when I close the public hearing, I think we can go back to the questioning of staff. And in the meantime, staff is listening closely as well, so we'll be able to anticipate some of our questioning. And of course, we're always free to question the people who are speaking as well. Is that okay? All right, we're all set then. The first person I'm going to call is Beverly Bryant. Ms. Bryant, if you would step forward, pull that microphone close to you, identify yourself, and you have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and members of the planning commission. I speak to you today as a private citizen. I'm a 20-year resident of 16940 Placer Oaks Road in Los Gatos, and have lived in the community for the seven years before that. My request is simple. Please keep the current planned development ordinance as it is right now, and do not appreciably alter it. I understand you may want to add some additional criteria, however, I believe that the severe restrictions that have been placed on the ordinance that you see before you, the draft ordinance, from the ad hoc committee of the council would be a grave mistake for you to accept. In my experience, planned development is a tool that every planning commission and every town or city planner in this country needs to have at its disposal. In the 1970s, I was a professor of urban planning and studies at Old Dominion University in Virginia. This tool had just been introduced in the planning lexicon. It was very valuable. We taught it to our students. We encouraged them, future planners of America, to use it because we thought that communities could benefit. In the 1980s, I, like you, served on a planning commission for three years in a little town in New Hampshire, where we had plenty of land, and it was $5,000 or $10,000 an acre. So it wasn't the amount of land, but what was happening was the farmers were dividing up their land in an unconscionable way, and the town was faced with the burden of trying to snowplow and build roads and do all those things. And what we were doing was asking them to use planned development to develop neighborhoods that were walkable, that were snowplowable, that's not even a word, but, you know, to make the town more readable and useful. We have planned development in Los Gatos, 75 of them, Irwin says. I know that courtside, the recreation and the condos are planned development. I know the Safeway store is planned development. And I thank you for what you did to make the end of Placer Oaks Road a planned development that I love. You're going to have condos there, you do have condos there, freestanding houses on my street, new sidewalks, thank you very much, as well as a lovely area for, not for recre, well, for recreation for the people who live there, but there's also, there are also businesses that are adding to the commercial and the revenue of this town. It is a planned development. Commercial and residential property in Los Gatos is going to be changing over the next several years. And we ask, that has to reflect modern architecture, planning requirements, water runoff regulations. Planned development is a tool that will make Los Gatos more relevant. You will be able to use it, you will be able to use it effectively. Do not take it out of your toolbox. Please use it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don't go away. Any questions for Ms. Bryant? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker will be Steve Markman.
Thank you very much. Mr. Russell stole my thunder, I think, a bit earlier when I was going to start by thanking you all for your service, having attended a number of those meetings earlier this week and seeing them, at least on TV. By the way, the TV crew does a fantastic job, and we should all be grateful for their contributions. In any event, I have many, many years been a PhD physicist, and I have to say, I never understood quantum mechanics, but I understand quantum mechanics better than I understand what's on your plate tonight. I read through the staff report, beautifully done, but I have to say, I don't understand why in 1993 you were allowed to insist on certain improvements being made, mitigation of traffic, and installation of signs, and whatever was necessary. And then suddenly, in 2002, it said, "Don't do that anymore." And you're being asked to institutionalize that, what I think is insanity, and ignore community benefit and infill policies. I have tried reading that report. I've read it three times at this point, and I still don't quite understand it. I just want to leave you with the thought that the communities need to be kept whole. We need to be careful about creating unnecessary traffic. We've heard a lot about traffic this week, and we don't want to create any more traffic problems than we already have. And we want to make sure that the kids are safe and the traffic is related to the kids. Please keep the community benefit in place and insist that developers, whether they volunteer it or not, do in fact take those things into consideration on any of the individual projects. So thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? Seeing none. And thank you for your endurance, if you've been here earlier this week.
Dale Miller, 115 Newell Court, Los Gatos. I want to thank you guys for doing a really good job on developing compromises that not everyone's happy with, but by definition, compromise means some people are happy mostly. I think you've done a really good job presenting to the council, although the council not necessarily agrees with some of your compromises. But I too agree that planned development should be a tool that you guys should be allowed to keep as is. It's intended to be an exception. The reason you're here is to represent the city. You've done, at the town, you've done a good job doing that. Removing this tool, or changing it for future generations, whether it's developers or commissioners, is probably not the right thing to do. An example, I think, in my mind is that we allow you guys to make decisions for us. You take community input, and you come up with the best compromise you can. You've done a good job doing that. Don't change the planned development plan.
All right, thank you, sir.
Madam Chairman, planning commission members, my name is Jack Arelllo, and I live at 135 Newell Court. I've been waiting for 63 years for the project that they're going to put in my neighborhood. This is where the former Elks property, or the Elks owned the former property, and they're going to put four units on our PUD program. It's going to look just like the rest of our neighborhood. This is one program, it's actually going to reduce traffic, because up to this time, and I've attended many meetings with previous city managers on the traffic problem, the traffic problem now extends all the way from the courtside, all the way to the Elks property. That's the parking lot now. And this project, this PUD project of four houses, will reduce that, will bring that neighborhood back into the neighborhood, the people back into that area. And I hope you can see why some PUDs work very well, and this is one of those exceptions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And the next speaker will be Chris Keith.
Good evening, Madam Chair and fellow commissioners. My name is Chris Keith. I'm at 129 Dover Street in Los Gatos. I've chosen to live in Los Gatos, and interestingly, in a PD that was approved a while back for a variety of reasons, predominantly due to the general character and sense of the community. It appears the planned development, PD overlay, has been utilized in the community for the past 50 or somewhat years on 75 or so projects. The tool has been adequately used to review a significant number of projects within the town to eliminate, restrict, or narrowly focus this tool in its favors, in favor of strict ordinances, restrictions, policies, or laws that would exclude the ability to accommodate challenging and potentially valuable future projects from the town and community, from future town and community consideration, and therefore limiting the town's ability to evolve in much the same way it has over the past 50 years. The general nature of the PD zone, as I understand it, gives consideration to the merits, public benefits, limitations, and specific, of the specific project, along with any potentially adverse impacts. Generally speaking, the town is fairly well-built out. However, I'm here tonight not to ask you to look at any of those specifics, but to retain the PD zoning, evaluating each opportunity on its own merits for redevelopment or development as the case may be, and use it as a tool for consideration in a general form based on its specific overall attributes, character, and impacts. If you and other community residents do not choose to approve such projects based on these considerations, clearly, the project was not or is not consistent with the desires of the town or community. However, by using restrictive tools and policies, the overriding ability to consider potentially viable products, projects that add to the character of the community is simply counterintuitive given the PD's historical and current ability to help make community what it is today. Therefore, please do not eliminate or create narrowly focused set of policies, ordinances, restrictions, or laws limiting the PD overlay or limiting the town's future. Alternatively, please continue to use the PD as a tool to do what was intended, to provide for the community, to evaluate each opportunity based on its individual merits and character and the context of the community as all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. No questions? Jill Fordice.
I moved to Los Gatos in 1996 and I've been at 191 Long Meadow Drive since 1999. And my husband and I have raised five children there. And we moved here for neighborhoods, community, schools, and open space. We love looking out at the town around us or what it used to be. When I got the notice in the mail that we're considering, as a town, doing something to the planned development ordinance, I, like my neighbor Dr. Markman, read this many times. And I'm actually a lawyer. And I don't understand the recommendation. I read hopefully what the specific intent was, which was to narrow the purpose and intent of the PD to protect and preserve hillsides, natural and historic resources, ridgelines, trees, creeks, riparian corridors, and open space. That sounded great. That's what I want to do. That's what I would like our town to do. And then I read number two, which is only allowing PD on properties that meet one of four criteria. And then it goes on to explain the sites that I thought we were going to be protecting. A site within the boundaries of the hillside development standards, a historic site, a site with a tree or a stand of trees that constitutes an important community resource, or a site which contains a stream, channel, or creek, or has supported riparian vegetation, fish, or wildlife. So I don't know what this is going to do. I don't understand it. I agree with the intent that if we're trying to help the planned development process so that we can further protect our town, preserve open space, preserve historical areas, our trees, our creeks, our streams, then I think this is, sounds good. The way we're doing it, I don't understand and I would love to get any input on that. I think one of the questions was, is there a map that shows what wouldn't be allowed anymore? And the answer was that the bulk of the town would not be eligible for planned development anymore, but that I think from my looking at the map, the hillside is still all available. So I don't understand and I'm here to just put those concerns forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we're going to have your question answered when we begin our discussions. Mr. Tercini.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the commission. I reside in the town of Los Gatos and I have for a number of years at 111 La Soon Court. I'm speaking both as a resident, but also as a builder. And I've been in the building industry for a little better than 30 years now. What I see is that the town has had the tool for planned developments for as many years as been described by Erwin earlier this evening, and it's been well-used. I think there's been a couple of projects more recently, I think it was cited within the last four years, that has caused some concern for those to say, "Should we continue to use planned development?" But I would like to state tonight that I think you need to reflect on how did the town grow and what was the proper use of planned developments and continue to keep the planned development in place for the town. What's occurring today is we have a change in the way the commercial buildings are being constructed. The retail industry is changing, as we all know, with the internet. So we're going to have a different type of retail than we're seeing today. In 10 years, I think retails can be a lot different. I think we're seeing different residential homes being proposed due to just lifestyle changes. We're a world economy and we're also a world in which we have an influx of folks here to the Bay Area, and some reside here in Los Gatos, that are accustomed to different styles of housing and are accustomed to different types of retail. They are very much in favor of outdoor dining and you're seeing a lot more outdoor dining today than you used to see years ago. And so if the commercial designation and the setbacks wouldn't allow commercial dining or outdoor dining, it would be, wouldn't be allowed. And so the PD allows that. The PD allows some creative uses of property, and it's not necessarily hillside property, for accommodating housing styles that are in vogue today. And I think we'll see changes in the housing over time to reflect the drought conditions that we're seeing this year and already hearing some projections for next year. I think we're going to be seeing less private yard space and more potentially common open space for folks to recreate. So I would just encourage the planning commission this evening to really consider keeping the planned development in place today. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tercini, don't leave because we have a couple of questions. Go ahead, Commissioner Erickson.
So I'd like to follow up on your point about the changing residential market. You have some experience with that. We've had a lot of, a substantial amount of testimony over the last several years from people who work in the marketplace, as you do, with that. So much of the, or some of the concern has been about smaller lot sizes. That's one of the concerns that was identified, and density issues. And so what the town has done now, because the R1 zones require minimum lot sizes of 8,000 at this point in time. So what the, the only option for developers now is use a PD to respond to the changes in the marketplace to go to a different kind of housing, similar to one that was proposed on an old county site that you're quite familiar with and so forth. Would a better response to that be, in your professional judgment, to change the R1 zoning to allow smaller lots? So as an example, to go to R1 4,000 lots as a type and to, for the town to discuss what are the kind of setbacks that there should be, what, you know, what are the rules governing that kind of zone, as opposed to allowing it to be done project-specific and be driven, if you would, from the side of the developer? Clearly, there's another small town that has small-town character, Carmel, whose R1 zoning requires minimum 4,000, so that's another response to it. Would that be a better response than severely restricting the PD?
That's an excellent question, Commissioner Erickson. And I'd like to address that by, I think there's a potential for a combination of adjusting the residential designation for R1, to potentially bring that R1 square footage down for the lot size. You may have some builders that would opt for that and go. It's wonderful if you can ever find a site to build under a straight zoning. It's a lot easier for everyone concerned. But if you still can't get there with the, in your example, a 4,000 square foot lot or a 3,500 square foot lot, then maybe you then would approach it from a planned development standpoint. But I think those are both tools that, and it's an excellent suggestion, is to look at that and look at some setbacks and be a little bit more far-reaching with some of the existing considerations.
Can I ask you one?
Sure.
Can I ask one follow-up question? So the town has a responsibility to, in accordance with this general, with its general plan, and particularly with the housing element, and making responses to make a variety of income levels, housing accessible to a variety of income levels. My sense is, but you deal with this marketplace every day, my sense is the underlying driver for the cost of housing is not the cost of two-by-fours, it's the cost of land. And I guess my wonderment is if in fact one had clear zoning with the smaller, and if we're assuming for the moment that, that we will develop smaller lot-sized, single-family housing. We have a lot of evidence that there's market demand for that and we have a lot of evidence that the town is, wants that because in fact there have been developments approved with that in recent years. If it was, I guess my wonderment is if in fact it was zoned now, if it were zoned with, and I'm just using 4,000 as an example, would the value of the land be clearer when it was purchased from the standpoint of a developer? And therefore, as opposed to its now, it seems like to me the possibility exists that there's a lot of speculation about what the value of the land is because I, unless I assume that I'm going to build 8,000 square foot lots and I'm going to develop this housing. And so I'm trying to speculate about what the value of the land is and what I'm going to convince the town to do. And therefore, it's not clear in terms of what the underlying value of that land is. And so if it, it seemed to be that the possibility exists that the clearer it is, what you can do with the land, the clearer the value of the land is, and it might have, might have the tendency to moderate the price of the land.
In theory, yes. When you have a zoning designation that one can identify the builders that are in the room today or here tonight, or would evaluate making a run at a property in the town of Los Gatos, it does definitely help that and establishes devaluation. What the misnomer is, is that land in this valley doesn't go down in value. We had the Great Recession and we saw property that maybe out in Stockton and some of the other outline areas, we saw some bankruptcies. You had some bankruptcies here locally as well. I don't doubt that. But typically, property owners in a down market pull the property off the market. It's not for sale. And now in today's market, properties available, it typically comes out unpriced. So that's the task that we have, is to identify how much one can pay for the property to go for. So to your point, Commissioner Erickson, it would help identify more clearly the path as far as what the price would be and I think the speed. Where you run into, and what we have going on today, is we just do not supply enough housing in the Bay Area to meet the demands. And that's why we continue to see the push. So I don't think that's going to be solved here in the town of Los Gatos because you just don't have as many opportunities to build any real volume. But I think what will happen there is that you do get the opportunity to provide the housing types that the market is looking for today. Thank you.
Mr. Tercini, I also have a question for you. This is a philosophical question, so bear with me. Using your crystal ball and the fact that, I know that you're involved in an industry where there's a lot of communication and there's futurists who are working with you. And I think about this smaller housing that we know you have introduced to the town, smaller lots. I always wonder what is going to happen when those lots or those houses are actually really filled with a family? And the toddler who wants to be on the bicycle or tricycle but doesn't have a sidewalk. And so then I wonder if those families are going to move on? If that's the anticipation of the developers that actually, once they have the couple of children, they will move on? And that's okay because someone else will come in and buy that smaller house? Or do you believe that these smaller homes are really going to hold the generations? And when I say "you," I'm talking about the industry as a whole. Because we do see the trend here in Los Gatos is to build those smaller units. And so we assume we're, you know, we're in the trend. So just, if you could address that for me.
I think I can. I have three children myself and started off in a town home and worked my way up to a whopping 2,000 square foot home on a small lot. And we raised three children. We had streets and the kids were able to play in the street. And I think what you're seeing right now with the designs that are occurring today, and I know the term, the Wernherf, or whatever that wants to be, there's some question of whether or not cars will be speeding down and is that really a safe place for kids to play? I think it is. I think we're getting back to the times where people are spending more time out in their streets and their courts and getting to know each other. And I think there is a lifestyle that people are comfortable with. Obviously, there will be some that will transition. Some of the projects we've built before, I watch them, they do turn over. But they turn over for the smaller, for the smaller family that then has the opportunity. If their job changes and they want to move to another location, that's when they're moving. But they're not moving because the house isn't adequate for them. I think they're moving from the standpoint that there is a new job opportunity. It may have been in Las, they were in Los Gatos before and now they're working in Mountain View. That's what I see happening. So I do believe that the homes provide the opportunity for families to stay.
The smaller homes. All right. Commissioner Seack.
Mr. Tercini, I hope you don't feel like you're in the hot seat, but it's a great, you have real-life experience that we can gain some knowledge on. Two quick questions. You mentioned that it is easier for a developer to, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, you said to just go straight to a zone. Like if we wanted a residential zone, you said it would be far easier than to use a PD? Is that?
It's easier to process, yes.
It's easier to process?
Mm-hmm.
So if that were the case, why isn't that often the route that we've seen, at least in the past couple of years?
Because you can't afford the property.
So it comes down to evaluation?
With construction costs, it comes down to the land value. It comes down to the construction cost. We're seeing a huge push in construction costs today. So those folks that have identified and even got approvals for projects, when they're going back out now and pricing what that cost of the structure will be, it's surprising. So that's what's, that's what's really driving it.
Okay. And then one other question. You mentioned, so we talked about residential, now about the business aspect and how retail is changing. How could the PD tool help changing retail demands? Could you elaborate a little bit on that?
Sure. I think from a setback standpoint, I really believe that, and there's a lot of movement towards moving the buildings out closer to the street, making the neighborhoods or the areas feel more walkable by bringing the buildings out to the street, by introducing, as I mentioned, the outdoor seating and patio seating. And I don't think you've had that opportunity before with some of the prior setback requirements on commercial. And I, so I just think, again, it just allows the design team, from the architect to the civil engineer, to creatively identify how to position the buildings to become a, and that's one of the thoughts that I also had, is we don't rarely, we rarely deal with just a rectangular site. It's typically an oddly configured parcel.
No, Commissioner Burge? Okay. All right. Well, Mr. Tercini, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We really appreciated you being up here. Bill Hirschman?
My name is Bill Hirschman and I was expecting to give quite a different presentation tonight. And I'm quite pleased to see the speakers that have gone before me. So I will just start by saying that I agree with everything that's been said, and so I won't bore you with the same comments. I will kind of turn my focus to maybe more, a more realistic or practical approach. I built, as I was sitting back there, I think, five PD projects in the town of Los Gatos. I've lived here for 30 years. I've developed for the majority of that time in various cities, but many projects in Los Gatos. I built a PD project at the North Forty. I built a PD project on a auto dealership. I built a PD project in the hillside. I built a PD project in the downtown. And I will tell you that as a result of that process, each and every one of those projects was a better project. As a result of the designs, the input from the planning commission, the neighbors, as painful as sometimes that becomes from the development side, I truly believe that they were better projects as a result of that process. I'll run out of time before, you know, I'll be able to address some of the questions you were asking. And if you want to ask me again, I'll share my comments. But many of the projects that we've constructed, or several of the projects, are now used as guidelines in many of your planning developments. Some of the things that we've done. Now, you know, I'd love to take full credit for that, but it was a result of the process. And all I can say, as previous speakers have said, it's not the process that you want to, it's not the words of the PD ordinance that you want to be concerned with, it's the process itself. If there's some projects that are out there that we all aren't maybe too proud of at the moment, well, unfortunately, that's us as a town that made those decisions. It's you. That's the town council. That's the staff. It wasn't the ordinance. The ordinance- The ordinance didn't make a decision as, as to what these projects would be. The ordinance is a guideline. I will run out of time, but you were, we were addressing questions about, you know, what, what guidelines or what rezoning could we do of properties. You're getting into the development business. Let, let those of us who know how to, how to do that fairly well be developers. Your goal is to manage the city in the, in the manner that you have vision of the town to be, I said city, oh my God, the town, that you, that the, the neighbors and that the town citizens is, is the direction you want to take, not individual projects and how they will, you know, that will work itself out. Don't take away your discretionary power. Don't allow the process to be eliminated. Thank you.
So, Mr. Hirschman, don't leave, okay, because you're up next. Okay. So we have Commissioner Talisfor, Commissioner Birch, Commissioner Sayak.
Thank you very much for coming down. So you have been through this process many times, and I think I've been here for many of them. So if, could you identify one where you felt that, even though you weren't, how do I put this? One that you felt was really successful, that the planning commission got really involved with, or could get really involved with, and changed the project to the best, to the better?
Why, I could name certainly more than one. I can take...
Just give me one.
In specifics? We built...
One that comes to your...
One of my projects was Kennedy Meadows. I don't know if you're familiar with that project. It was a 15-unit project. I was not the person who took that through the development process. We took it at the tentative map and carried it on. But I will use that only as an example of a project that was, you know, it was many years ago, so I'll have to remember the acreage, but I think it was eight or, eight or, seven or eight acres. And rather than spreading that development out amongst the whole property, what was created was more of a cluster, it was their larger lots, but it was a cluster-type development with a wonderful trail that's, that's around the whole, an open meadow, riparian area that's used now. I mean, literally hundreds of people use that trail and that area on a daily basis. I know, because we walk our dog there every day. I live there. I think that's a true example of how the PD, if it was a straight subdivision, would have been divided up, maybe there wouldn't have been 15 houses, maybe there would have been 14. But the benefit that resulted, I believe, to the community as a result of the process changed that project significantly.
Go ahead.
But can you be specific about what it was that the PD did? I mean, I'm familiar with the area. So what was the specific thing that the PD did that...
Well, again, I did not take it through the tentative map process. However, I'm certainly familiar with what it did. It, it, if it was a standard zoning, we wouldn't, the, the person who took it through I would not have been able to develop it in the manner that it was developed. It would have been required that the houses be spread out and lots be subdivided amongst the whole property. What they were able to do is in some areas cluster, and in some areas move, you know, move the lots, spread them out, which allowed a much greater open space, significant open space. We always talk about open space, but to me, open space isn't a five-by-six patio. You know, that's not real open space. I mean, real open space is somewhere where you can walk your dog, for the community. Now, for an individual owner, yeah, a five-by-six patio, you can have barbecue, it's very nice. But for the community, it's, it's a different, it's a different thing. And I think in that particular instance, which I think is your question, how did that benefit from that? I believe it benefited from that process immensely.
And what was the exception that stood out?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
Well, what I mean is, sometimes in PDs, there are exceptions to, I mean, a PD is an exception. So it wasn't a subdivision.
Well, no, PD's not an exception. I mean, I will, I'll turn that over to the attorney, but a PD is not an exception. It's a, it's a guideline under which certain, you know, development standards can be met. It's not an exception.
Well, but there could be exceptions to them.
Well, I, I think I understand what you're, you're trying to say, Commissioner Talisfor. Do you mind if we move on?
No, no.
Okay. Commissioner Sayak?
Mr. Hirschman, you gave us five areas where you did PDs. I understand North Forty and the auto dealerships. With the others, was it your choice to enter as a PD, or was it, in working with staff, in articulating what the end goal was, they helped you arrive at using a PD?
Well, I believe the PD process is a good thing. So we would have voluntarily entered into it. But, but I, you know, I would have to reach back to really remember whether the property was actually zoned. I believe in most cases it was zoned as a, you know, a zoning with a PD overlay.
I see.
Yeah, and so...
Okay. Thank you.
So, Mr. Hirschman, I also have a question, and then we can go on to you, Commissioner O'Donnell. So I actually want to talk to you in terms of your commercial expertise, but before I do that, I'm going to comment that you did do housing on Boyer Lane.
I did.
And that was one of the first developments in the town where single-family homes were put on narrow lots, and it has stood the test of time. So I commend you for that, both inside and outside those units. I've been in many of them now, and they have stood the test of time. And I, I have a feeling that might have been a PD.
It was, and thank you. We're very proud of that project. That was 65 different separate plans that we came up with during that process. There were actually 65 different layouts that we had done for that, all as a result of the process. And as painful as that was, I, I agree with you. That is a project that we're quite proud of, and I think actually ended up a better project as a result of the process.
Okay. So now I actually want to ask you some questions about commercial development, because I know you've done it on Los Catos Boulevard. And so as we take a look at infill projects, and we think about whether or not we would use plan development to perhaps take some very old property, I was, you know, 1956 smaller strip mall. If you were to look at that today, what would you want to put there? Would it be office buildings? Would it be retail? I mean, we heard Mr. Tercini say that the character of retail is changing, which of course, I have personal knowledge of, so I can agree with that. But I'm just wondering, with you as a developer, looking at some of our very old, small retail strips.
I think I'm, I'm familiar with a couple of the properties you're probably referring to on the Boulevard. Very challenging. I mean, there, there are some older buildings on the Boulevard that, that, you know, certainly aren't maybe as, as, as a monument to architecture as you might want them to be at the moment. It'll be very challenging to develop those parcels without some kind of, of, it's very difficult to go in on a retail building that's seven or 8,000 square feet, purchase the building, knowing that ultimately you're going to end up with maybe 2,000 square feet as a result of the, it's very challenging to do. Therefore, you don't see it happen. What you see is the buildings continue to deteriorate, because it's just such a challenge. Without something, even as, even something as simple or as, well, as complex maybe as the PD ordinance, it would make it virtually impossible. I mean, the setback requirements, the, I, you know, certainly not something that we'd, we'd address. The other thing is, the times change, and I can only use our building on, in the North Forty. You know, that went from a single-tenant building when we first built it, to a, to a multi-tenant building, to a retail building, to a medical building. Things change. And, 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 you know, I would encourage the town to be flexible with that, because things do change. Housing, you had a discussion about the housing. The way people live and operate retail, as you well know, it's changing. And what is it going to be tomorrow? I wish I knew. I'd be a better developer, would I, if I'd know, you know, exactly what the future would, would hold. But we don't. And so, you know, we have to give a little bit of flexibility so that we as building owners, or as property owners, as well as developers, have the ability to make some changes. Does that sort of come around full circle to the PD? Yeah, you bet it does.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell, I know you wanted to ask a question.
Yeah, I just, what I've understood from your comments, which I appreciate, but if I were to boil it down, and I think at one point you virtually said this, there's nothing wrong with the PD process. There may be misapplications of the PD process. So at the end of the day, you don't like that project. It wasn't because the PD process forced that. It was because the decision-makers perhaps made the wrong decision. And knowing how decision-makers are, we can make the wrong decision, whether it's a PD or not. So I think you're saying, don't blame the PD, blame the decision-makers.
I would hate to see you as other speakers ahead. I, yes, you've just pretty much more clearly stated my comments, but, but don't, don't, don't throw away your bag of tools. It's a very valuable bag of tools. You've heard many other people before me say the same thing. Why eliminate your tools? You know, and you're not perfect. You know, there'll be one or two that maybe don't turn out the way that everyone expected them to be. You know, you give it your best shot.
Thank you. And then Commissioner Badami?
You said, let the developers do the developing, but the community is naive to the process, and they feel the pain of the increased density, which impacts traffic and schools. So with that in mind, can you provide your input on mitigating traffic in town and the impact to the schools?
Let me respond to your first comment. There's people in this audience I've never seen before. They may have been here before, but not when I was here. There's a group of people in this audience that are speaking to, frankly, congratulating you on the job that you've done. There's a, we always are challenged as developers, because it's very difficult to get people out to support your project. The only people that turn out are people that, that don't support your project. So I don't believe that there has been, I think you've frankly done a good job. I really do. I think the town's done a good job. I think, so with regards to traffic, and I mean, I don't have the solution for traffic. I don't think anybody has a solution for traffic. It's not a town problem. It's a regional problem. You know, all we can do as a community, I believe, is, is do what you're doing. I mean, there is no answer. I have no answer. You know, are the properties going to be developed? Yes, they are. I mean, all I can tell you is that all of us as developers pay what we feel are enormous traffic mitigation fees. The intersection of Highway Nine and University Avenue, I paid mitigation fees on that to have that intersection improved, I believe nine years ago. It's just now happening. Okay? I don't know why that's the case. I don't know. I paid the fees, and life goes on. Not criticizing the town. I'm just saying that, that you do take it into account at the time, but then you need to move forward and, and make these things happen. North Forty, we've all sat in those meetings. It's, it's a struggle. But the impacts need to be, to be mitigated to the best of the ability, and then move on. I mean, it's, it's a traffic jam now. It's probably going to be a traffic jam later. And I know that's not a popular comment, but, but that's the reality. It's the reality of the situation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Oh, one more question? Okay. I'm sorry. Commissioner Badami, did you want to go forward? Okay. Commissioner Erickson?
So, thank you for coming up and speaking, Mr. Hirschman. So I, you know, you know me well enough, and I have experience with me, and know where I, I basically believe, believe the developers do the developing. The town needs to do its role with respect to that also. Could you comment on, so there's, there's the possibility, though, that the town's zoning ordinances, its commercial design guidelines, become stale over time? And, and if, if the nature of the residential market, the nature of the commercial market changes over time, and we don't, and this doesn't have anything to do with whether one should continue to have planned developments necessarily, but could, do you have a perspective on whether we have allowed some of our zoning regulations and some of our design guidelines, both residential and, and commercial design guidelines, to become stale and not responsive to changes in the market? And therefore, we've potentially overused planned development because we haven't made those responsive to changes in the marketplace? That's a...
Let me start by addressing, when you first put up the, it's been a long time since I've read the PD, and when he goes up on the board, you read that, and you say, well, you know, those are great rules. What do you mean? Those are great rules for everybody. I just go by these rules. It's great. We can all agree that those are good things that have happened in the town. I don't know that I'd use the word stale. I'd use the word, maybe we just need to update a little bit. I, my suggestion would be that, that maybe there's an ad hoc committee, a committee. Bring, bring some developers in. Bring some landowners in. Bring some planning staff commissioners in. Let's talk about how to better interpret or better direction. Previous speaker was, you know, as long as we have direction, and I speak as a developer, but a landowner is no different, we can take this whole situation down. We forget that sometimes the PD is just a simple subdivision of a lot or something. I mean, you've talked about that with the tree or something. So it's not just always developers that are involved here. It's, it's your everyday homeowner who is less familiar with the process than, than we are. Very frustrating. If, if the rules are moving a little bit, and, and we don't quite know why that's happening. So my suggestion would be to have some kind of, of community input. And, and I don't think it's broken. I don't think it's broken. It may need to be tweaked a little bit, but I don't believe it's broken. And that's why I'm suggesting, don't throw away some good rules that have, that have held the test of time for 50 years.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Hirschman. Thank you. Doug Rich?
My name is Doug Rich. I am with Developer Valley Oak Partners. I'd like to echo a lot of the comments that were heard tonight, and I think I'd like to, in regards to keeping the tool of the plan development, and I think the one thing that I'd like to add tonight is, is the perspective of someone who's actively processing a plan development in the town right now. And the benefits of that is, I see that we have a, a piece of land that's over the 40,000, so it qualifies for the infill. It's a unique site in the sense that on one side, we have a commercial application. On the other side, we have a multifamily application. On the other side, we have a medical office building. On the other side, we have a single-family home. And so, a lot of different constraints and things that we have to look at, because one of the things that we know in implying this is that we want excellence in design and compatibility in that neighborhood. And so the plan development allows us some flexibility to be able to address those items. The other thing, from our point of view, and this is unique to our circumstance, every piece of, of land and every proposed community is different, but for us, as we looked at that and looked at one of the main policies that was even mentioned tonight, in the town, in terms of being able to provide a variety of housing types for a variety of income levels, is that, for us, we are going to be offering, as, as one of the community benefits, an increase in the number of affordable homes that would be required as part of the baseline. And the plan development is allowing us to be able to do that. And we know, we see as a developer, we hear in the news, we see all the time, that affordable housing is, is one of the key items that's, that's facing the Bay Area in general, and following it. And, you know, just recently, in terms of the council elections and all these things, affordable housing comes to the forefront in many people's minds. It's something that's appropriate. And so we feel like the plan development allows us the flexibility to really create what we all want, which is a win-win, in terms of creating a high-quality, excellent community and home, while also providing a great benefit that's in need of both this town and the broader area with a higher level of affordability. And so with that, then, I would say, you know, would really support and, and request that you keep that tool in your arsenal to be able to allow this flexibility for this one example, I think would be a strong benefit. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have a question for you. Commissioner Badami?
Thank you. What is your definition of an affordable home in Los Catos?
We were following the definition of affordable homes per your Affordable Home Ordinance.
Not to be confused with...
That's okay. Ms. Pravetti could provide that to us, or Mr. Paulson, can I? I know it's a percentage of, it's all calculated for us. Commissioner Badami?
It's our below-market rate home program, and there is, there are requirements for what constitutes an eligible BMP as part of a development proposal.
But BMP is different from an affordable.
No, I believe we're talking about the same.
Okay. Thank you.
Just different words.
All right. Thank you very much. John Shepperson? Mr. Shepperson, I hardly recognize you without your hula hoop.
I lost them.
Did you?
I lost my hula hoops.
I'm sorry. I thought maybe you left it next to the lectern the last time you spoke.
No, but I had to borrow some, and they're in the car, so...
Okay. All right. Well, identify yourself formally for me.
This is not taking away from my time, is it?
It is not. We haven't started yet.
All right. John Shepperson, 120 Oakrim. The general plan is supposed to be, by law, the town's constitution for land use. It is supposed to provide guidance to the community on how we develop our land. In my humble view, the PD has been used on occasion, perhaps many, I'm not an expert in this, to circumvent the general plan standards. So I'll give an example, because I was intimately involved in the Albright project and the litigation that ensued from it. It was subject to a 35-foot maximum height limit, subject to rigid development standards. As a lawyer, to me, that was strong language, that those standards were mandatory. And the case law is, if you have mandatory standards, there's no discretion from the council, you must follow that standard. And if you don't, then the approval can be set aside. So we filed the first lawsuit because there was no EIR, and the court granted that. And in the first approval, it was 85 feet, and the maximum height limit was 35 feet. And so, to me, I guess it could have been 100 feet, or 100, or 200 feet. And so, what does the general plan standards mean? Perhaps really nothing. The PD becomes like this little hole that just blows apart the entire document. And so, maybe in occasion, it's effective, but because it can be liberally construed, then you have things like Albright. And there was a comment that the PD has passed the test of time for 50 years. I would submit, it hasn't passed the test for two years because of the Albright project. And let's look at it from, you know, there's multiple perspectives. The developers, you know, the government, the community. If I'm now a, because of the experience for the Charter Oaks people, and the fact that they thought that they were going to be living next to buildings that were 35 feet, I think that it's a fair thing for anybody, any real estate agent in town that has a property that they're selling, and it's next to a property that may be developed through the PD process, that they may have a requirement to put in their disclosures now, that we have a general plan, but it may not be followed, and what may be next to your property may be, this property that you're selling, what's next to it may be much higher or much dense than what's in the general plan. And so, we look at it from the developer's point of view, and they want clarity as to how they want to develop. What about the homeowners? What about the property owners?
Thank you, Mr. Shepperson. No questions? All right. Mr. Martinski, I think I probably didn't pronounce that correctly, but...
My name is Al Martinskis.
And just pull that microphone rate down a little bit, towards you. There you go.
My name is Al Martinskis. I live at 90 Highland Avenue, and I lived here for 44 years. So I'm an old timer. And I watched this town then and watch it now, and I'm proud to be its resident. And thank to people like you, and many planning commissioners that have been before you, that you've done your job, and you've done your job well. And as the input that I've heard here from the audience is actually superb, because people basically care for this community, and everybody has their specific interests, okay, but I think one thing they all have in common, we love Los Gatos, we love the place where we live, where the kids grew up, and we'd like to here, like to live here probably for the rest of our lives, God willing. Okay. Basically, I know three minutes is a very, very short time. I just wanted to say that you have a tool in your toolbox, which was so very amply put, which is the Plan Unit Development. And I speak as an architect, as a planner, and as a developer. I've done these, I've worn these three hats. I'm retired now, but I watch life go on, projects being built, some not so good, some could be better. But all in all, you guys have done a fantastic job and continue doing it. Don't give up the Plan Unit Development idea. It was created for a reason. Because many, many years, late 50s, we had places like Tropicana Village, could buy a house for a dollar down. Okay, those became slums. Then came the gingerbread era, where every developer, you know, had a lot that he could build, no controls, okay? So they had five plans, okay, for 100 or 200 lots. Okay, five plans, okay? And the driving force was profit, okay? It's also today. However, it's actually been done not purely for the profit, but also to leave something to the community. And I think people, you know, developers here, design professionals, have a tendency to work together, and Plan Unit Development gives you that chance, okay, for you to become part of the project, for you to have your input, your creative input, okay, your experience, okay, as a resident and also as a planning commissioner. And the developer actually, is actually part of a team now, okay? And the design team, okay, with your help, you know, can create some wonderful projects. So they're all saying, if ain't broke, don't fix it. Keep your PD. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. No questions. Lee Quintana?
I think I'm going to be speaking slightly differently than most people have up to this point. I agree that the planned development is a good tool, and I'm speaking, I should say, I'm speaking both as a resident, as a prior commissioner, and as a prior planner. I think, and I think that there have been problems with how PDs have been used in the town in the recent past. I think there are two types of PDs. One addresses use. The other type addresses what the ad hoc committee has been trying to address, the site circumstances and restraint. I think they adequately have done that. My problem with the PD ordinance as it currently stands is it's very difficult to understand. In fact, it's confusing and at times conflicting. I think that I wouldn't like to see the PD thrown out totally. I do believe that there are other uses for it, for uses. In the recent past, one of my big problems has been that PDs have been used on sites that have a general, a base general plan and/or a base zoning, that the PD use that is being proposed and approved is not part of that. So they're replacing it instead of, it's not being used to combine a base use or the base general plan, and another use is being used for another use without changing the general plan or the zoning. And also, I believe that the heights are standards in the general plan, and you should not be able to exceed them with the PD unless you do a general plan amendment. Same thing with density. One of the problems with how we're using PDs now is we're putting residential on commercial sites that don't have any base density. So we're winding up with these higher densities, smaller lots, seemingly crammed together without any additional open space. And since PDs are supposed to be to, for excellence in design, and I read that as excellence in site design and architectural design and optimization of open space, I believe that if you're going to use PDs for residential, that there should be some criteria that says, okay, we're not going to go with the 50% land coverage, because by the time we take out streets and driveways and parking and all that, we can optimize the open space, we wind up with what seems like less. And one last thing I have to say, because I think this is really important, the way we do PDs, separating them from the A&amp;S process, creates all kinds of problems and misunderstandings. They should be done at the same time, either concurrently or, you know, immediately subsequent, but at the same hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Quintana, and I think we have some written remarks from you as well. So, okay, so we have Commissioner O'Donnell, Commissioner Sayak, and Commissioner Talisfor.
In listening to your comments, I want to make sure that I properly understand it. Are you saying that you think the PD ordinance would be good were it changed, as opposed to done away with?
I think it needs to be rewritten, and I think the ad hoc committee has done a good start. I think there needs to be more specificity when it comes to the area of uses and what uses can be combined where. Yeah, I don't want to throw out the PD totally, but I do think we need to restrict its use more specifically, so that there's more consistency in its application and interpretation, and that the zoning ordinance itself is more understandable to, you know, not only professionals, although I have to admit, I'm a professional at this, and I don't understand it. It's confusing.
Commissioner Sayak?
I know you were a planner for many years in the city of San Jose. Did you have any PDs when you were working with them?
I only worked with the PDs as, I did the environmental review. We had a different process than you do here. We had a separate section that reviewed the consultant's work to make sure that it was consistent with the technical reports. So I dealt with many PDs from the environmental standpoint, but that meant I had to understand the project as well.
And one other?
Sure.
One of the suggestions by a previous speaker was creating an ad hoc committee, and it sounds like you would also advocate for more specificity. Do you think that that should be taking place within the committee, or do you think your comments and...
I actually think that this forum is not a good forum to get a discussion going as to, you know, what you see as problems, what you see as solutions. I mean, I have so much more I could say, and it's sort of frustrating not to be able to. So, yeah, I think some kind of platform where there can be free and open discussion before you actually sit down and start crafting a change. And, you know, like I said, I don't think we should get rid of the PD, but I do think we should change our ordinance. And I thought Bill Hirschman's comments were very interesting. The hillside example that he gave would be allowed under the ad hoc committees, council ad hoc committees revisions.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Thank you very much for coming down. I know you have years of experience in this, but, so did, I assume you had the chance to read the suggestions from the ad hoc committee?
I have read them in the past when they came to the, excuse me, Town Council. I glanced through them this time. I've been extremely busy and have been dealing with multiple problems, so, but I have a general understanding of what they are.
Okay. And what, can you give us maybe a thought, or what your thoughts are about what you've read here?
Like I said, I think it's a good beginning.
A good beginning.
I don't think we should totally eliminate it from all the rest of town, but I do think there's...
Possibly add, what would you do? Add, or be more specific with the application?
Okay. One thing is, I would not, I would craft the language such that if you're doing a planned development in a non-residential zone, that one of the uses has to be a use that is allowed by that zone, and you can combine it with another possible use, but you can't substitute the use. Because to me, that's an instance where you really should be changing the zoning or the general plan. You might still wind up with a PD, but that is, you know, different.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quintana. That concludes the public portion of the public hearing. And commissioners, so I can ask you, would you like to take a short break, and then we can begin our deliberations? All right, thank you. So we'll be back in 10 minutes. I'm going to close the public portion of the public hearing on this matter, and I'm going to look to my fellow commissioners for either comments, any questions you may have of staff, or if anyone wants to make some type of a motion. So, let's see, we have heard both from, well, Commissioner Birch and Commissioner O'Donnell, you both raised your hands simultaneously. You're okay deferring? Okay, Commissioner Birch.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to ask staff, in reading the minutes of the council discussion over this topic, it was brought up a number of times that I think as a rule, some, a discussion like this would go back to the general plan committee? And I'd like to know why they did not review this prior to this coming to the commission.
Thank you. You do have the verbatim minutes from the June 2 Town Council meeting. They talked about, you know, a variety of things, as you saw in the minutes, and they concluded by referring the matter to the planning commission as their recommendation. They acknowledged that should the ad hoc committee go forward, because it would result in the need for general plan changes as well as zoning code amendments, that the first step in that approval process would be to go to the general plan committee. But because there was still uncertainty as to whether or not this recommendation should be the proposal that actually goes through the formal process, that's why it came to you.
Yes, Commissioner Birch.
Well, with that said, I'd actually like to ask a question of my fellow commissioners. In reviewing this, this is a monumental decision, and I feel that certainly there is work to be done on our planned development guidelines. However, I feel that this needs more work, and I would like to recommend that perhaps this does go back, this goes to the general plan, that maybe an ad hoc committee is created that involves members of the general plan. I certainly feel that someone needs to represent our historic committee, some members from the town, developers and others, to create something that I think moving forward will help both the commission and the council as we make rulings on planned development. And I would just look to my commissioners to see if anyone agrees, you have a different idea, but I feel that this is a very large decision that we're making tonight, and I don't feel that we have all the information we need.
Commissioner Birch, can I just ask you a question? Would it be fair to translate what you've said into a motion, which would be to refer the matter to the general plan committee with specific instructions to establish an ad hoc committee made up of general plan committee members, as well as members of the public, business, developers, et cetera? Is that, is that, am I going in the right direction in terms of emotion?
Yeah, I'm very comfortable doing that. And in that list that you said, I really do feel that someone needs to represent our historic committee, if that is something that I could suggest.
All right. So I know, Ms. Pravetti, you want to say something, so please do.
Thank you. I just want to provide a suggestion to the commission, because I think you are heading in a way that is reflective of the testimony you heard this evening. The general plan committee has a very narrow purpose, and that is to review general plan amendments. So if the suggestion is that you like the idea of a committee made up of residents, developers, perhaps yourself, historic perspectives, or whatever other perspectives you would recommend, I would suggest that be a recommendation to the Town Council, and then they could appoint or determine the appropriate way of finding that group of people. Thank you.
So Commissioner O'Donnell?
I'm going to assume for one more... I'm going to assume for one moment that a motion has not been made.
That's correct. No motion, no motion is on the table.
I want to first say that I agree with the sentiments of what we just heard, but I would also say this, that were I to have to make a recommendation tonight, I would agree, I think substantially with all the speakers, which is to say, you don't simply throw away the PDs everywhere in town except the areas now left. But on the other hand, you could certainly tighten it up, and you could certainly deal with the issues that were raised. And so a lot of the criticism we've had in the last two years can center on things like, can you in a commercial zone put only residential in there because you have a PD? That was a question that was kind of raised tonight. Can you in an area which is a 35-foot maximum height, put in a 60-foot building? Those kinds of questions are practical questions that have come up, and the litigation did not solve those issues. So although it seemed very clear to the speakers, they didn't win that lawsuit. So I would think that if we could send it back, not send it back, recommend that a committee be appointed to deal with what I think is the nitty-gritty of the PD, so that the end of the day, one could begin to draft the changes. You have to identify what you're worried about, the inconsistencies that you think we've dealt with in the past, and some people think improperly dealt with. Once you narrow that down to that, how do you make the PD ordinance better without simply saying, "I'm not going to apply it," to most of the town? So I would certainly support a motion in that regard as improved, I think, when it was pointed out, that we probably shouldn't send it to, try to send it to the general plan committee, but we should ask the council to appoint a committee.
Thank you. And any other comments? Commissioner Erickson?
So, as I understand from the staff, there was a postcard that was sent to every household, and I think every business, in the community, alerting them to this. So purportedly, the reason why the changes, is why we're considering this and why the council felt the need to appoint a committee is because there was substantial concern with the present one. So the response to the opportunity to allow the public to express that concern that's, that potentially is driving a significant change to the, to the plan development practices of the town, isn't being borne out tonight with the turnout of the people who came. And overwhelming majority of the number of people who chose to come and chose to respond to that solicitation for input did not see that there were significant problems with it. So my, I guess I have a fundamental question. There doesn't seem to be much public evidence that it's broken. And so while I would, while I would not oppose the, an action to appoint a committee to study the issue, it seems to me that unless the individual commissioners have significant concerns themselves and have some evidence of it, I don't have much evidence that there's a huge public outcry with it being broken. And so I guess part of my sense would be that the motion should say that it shouldn't contemplate significant changes in the present practice.
Well, I want to make a comment, Commissioner O'Donnell, and that is that I had actually written down some notes as we moved along, and so it seems that I can support all three viewpoints, not that they're that much different. But I wrote down that it looks like the proposed ordinance doesn't tighten the loose ends, but for all practical purposes, it eliminates use of a PD for what could be up to 90% of our future projects. So, so it didn't seem to do what we've heard needs to be done, which is just tighten up some loose ends. And also, I'm concerned about doing this, eliminating everything but the hillsides, because we are a built-out town, and we definitely have not addressed our infill issues. And, I mean, I can identify just off the top of my head at least three sites that I'm thinking in the not-so-distant future, we're going to have, the buildings are going to fall down. If no one comes in and takes them down, they're going to fall down, which means we're going to be looking at some kind of a redevelopment of the area. So I would, if anyone made a motion to keep this as it is, I would support that motion. But I'm not certain that there's even a motion that we can make, Ms. Prevetti. Maybe I'm, maybe I'm mistaken, but given the instructions from council, it seems like council just wants us to give our thoughts to them. So maybe you can help clarify that for me. I wasn't clear myself exactly what their expectations were.
Well, if I may, just based on my observation of the town council and the kind words and good words that they have for the work that you've been doing, I think they will respect your recommendations and comments very seriously. So if you, if you should go down the path of advising or recommending to the council that a group made up of developers and other interested parties come together and then identify, as you have, are there inconsistencies? Is there issues with application? Are we really getting to the heart of what our infill challenges are here in town? You know, the, all of the comments that you've just been making are all excellent, and I think our town council would appreciate them.
But what I didn't hear from you is what vehicle is the most useful vehicle to get this message to the town council? And I think Commissioner O'Donnell had one idea, and Commissioner Birch had not that different of an idea, and Commissioner Erickson also mentioned something, so hold, okay.
I just, I just also wanted to add that we've been looking ahead at upcoming council meetings, and we would like to be able to bring whatever the suggestions or recommendations of the planning commission are back to the town council this fall, so that way they can decide, you know, really the next steps. So they're eagerly awaiting whatever it is you should suggest.
All right, so Commissioner O'Donnell, and I think Commissioner Talisfor, you also wanted to speak.
I'm respectful of the ad hoc committee of the council, and they have asked us to do something. I don't think it would, personally, I don't think it would be helpful to simply send back by saying, "Leave it alone." I, it's fairly clear that at least some of the council don't want to leave it alone. That being the case, and if we're facing, they want to throw it out, then I think we should try to gather some evidence and some, as to why they, I think, as to why they either shouldn't throw it out, or if they should, why they should. I do not understand why they should, but they don't need me to tell them what to do. They need us to give them some ammunition to think about it. And I think the ammunition would be better if it came from the kind of committee we're talking about. And therefore, I think at least three or four, or maybe all of us, could probably support that rather than simply saying to the council, "That's crazy. Don't throw it out." So that's what I would support.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Yeah, I appreciated so much the people that came and spoke. It was, it was great. I loved it. But, you know, I, when I reread the transcript from the town council meeting, the ad hoc committee goal, it said, was to have determined if the PDs were getting used appropriately when they were and when they were not. And that's sort of something they wanted us to be able to address. Well, you know, it's a little bit hard to do that with this short timeframe. So, but there are things that I do think need to be addressed. And certainly one of them, and I think we know it, and we've heard it tonight, is the current trends in housing, and the needs that are there, and the needs of our town. So that couldn't be addressed with the way I think the ad hoc committee wrote this PD currently. But, so I would support this going back as a recommendation, that we need to expand this research into it. And one area for sure is that, is that, the connection between presenting the PD and the architecture and site at the same time. Sometimes we don't do that, and that, to me, has always been problematic. So I would, that's a real strong recommendation I would suggest they look into. And then more specificity. So that's my suggestion.
Commissioner Badami, and then Commissioner Erickson?
What I would like addressed is how the history of our more recent PDs have conflicted with our general plan. And that is the heights that we heard a speaker talk about, more traffic, higher density, crowded schools, loss of use, loss of views, excuse me, and lack of open space. So I agree with adding more specificity, more specificity to provide more focus and direction.
Commissioner Erickson?
So we all received a letter from Mark Robson as an agenda item. In the last page of his letter, in the quote, "decision process suggestion," my sense is, he asked a lot of questions that would be valuable for the committee that we're talking to, not that they could be the only questions, but he hit some of the questions that if I were going to sit down and write out less of questions, Mr. Robson identified what some of those are. And he's clearly, in my experience, a responsible developer and a loyal citizen of the town and resident of the town. So those could become some of the questions that this kind of a committee would, and so, and I would, so that's one comment. My second comment would be, my sense is the committee should have some representation from these groups. I would suggest that. The general plan committee, because there could be some general plan, from the planning commission, and there's opportunities for a person to represent more than one. The historic preservation committee, the, I think, the broad, what might be broadly defined as the development community, I don't, doesn't necessarily be a developer, but somehow that, and then the general public. So there are concerned citizens, so those kind of groups.
Yes, Commissioner O'Donnell, you think you've got a handle on this?
I'll try to make a motion, so, because I think we're in so much agreement, and people can improve on it if I don't get it right. My motion would simply be that we recommend to the town council that it appoint a committee to do further research on the matter, to decide whether or not it should pursue the course suggested by the town council's ad hoc committee, or whether it should, as discussed this evening, consider improving the present PD ordinance, and whether in fact, based on more recent times, there's been any violation of the spirit of the PD which should be addressed. So that's, that would be my motion.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Talisfor is going to second?
Yeah, I'll second that. That was well said.
Do we have some discussion? Commissioner Erickson?
I'd just like to amplify a little bit of my, I agree with Commissioner O'Donnell was, it would seem to me, I'm not sure that the problem to be addressed, or the concerns to be addressed, has been clearly articulated. So it seems to me the first step for the committee would be to clarify what are the problems that are trying to be solved? Because it's not clear to me what the problems are that are trying to be solved, and I think that's part of the disconnect of applying a solution for the problem. So, so to the extent that that, that the maker of the motion would incorporate that emphasis in his motion.
I would, I would say this, though. I thought there was some emphasis this evening that the problems that they're trying to address are the, what I would consider the recent problems. For example, Albright, and we haven't made a decision on the north 40, but my, I would adopt what you're suggesting and simply include within that a review of the last few years on the applications of the PD to see if there are any particular problems raised by that. For example, Lee Quintana this evening fairly narrowly identified some problems that she saw, and that's worthy of consideration. So yes, I would adopt that language, and ask the secondary if she would too.
Yes.
Thank you. And also, Ms. Prevetti, if you could call special attention to the town council of Mr. Robson's letter, because I do think that he does pose questions that encapsulate most of what we've discussed this evening, both had, brought, raised to us, but also have been on our minds as well. So I think that would be adequate. So is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And a special thank you, actually, to the speakers this evening, because it was very, we seldom have the opportunity to ask open-ended questions on matters that we would like to further educate ourselves, so I really appreciate the speakers who have shown up. I am going to call the next matter, but I do know that there was one speaker who needed to leave early, but I'm not sure who that speaker is. Well, I can't, I cannot call on you yet, because we need to do, procedurally, we need to do two things, but maybe you could step over here and just identify which, your name, so that they'll, they'll be able to pull your card for me. All right, so turn back to my notes. I'm going to call agenda item number three. This is a request to approve a plan development application, PD 11005, and accept mitigated negative declaration, ND 11007, for property located at 15600 and 15650 Los Gatos Boulevard, which would allow the applicant to demolish existing commercial buildings, building to construct new commercial buildings, and to allow a 24-hour super drugstore. Ms. Savage, you want to give us the report?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. The site was previously occupied by Los Gatos Chevrolet Auto Dealership. The applicant is proposing to demolish the existing structures and construct two new commercial buildings. One, an 8,823 square foot drugstore, and the second, a 12,000 square foot commercial building. The tenants have not yet been determined for that second commercial building, and the existing CVS at King's Court at the corner of Los Gatos Boulevard and Blossom Hill Road would move to this location if the project were to be approved. The proposed CVS building would be 25 feet and 8 inches tall, with some architectural elements higher than that, at 30 feet and 6 inches tall. That structure would be similar to or less than the heights of the buildings to the east, which are 25 to 27 feet tall for the commercial buildings and 31 feet tall for the residential building. The proposed buildings would result in minor obstructions of the hillside views from the southbound travel lane on Los Gatos Boulevard, depending on the location and the position of the driver or pedestrian. Those obstructions would be limited in duration and extent. The town's architectural consultant found the current proposal to be more desirable than the previous designs, and made additional recommendations for both the site plan and the architecture. The applicant revised the project to meet those recommendations. The applicant modified plans to incorporate pedestrian amenities, including a pedestrian pathway with trellises, landscaping, and special paving which connects the two commercial buildings. And the applicant modified the plan so that the drugstore building is located at the corner of Los Gatos Boulevard and Los Gatos Almadon Road. The revised proposal addresses the concerns raised by the conceptual development advisory committee staff and the consulting architect. There will also be a pharmacy drive-through window, and that would be located to the north side of the building, opposite of Los Gatos Almadon Road. A traffic report was prepared, and the project would result in an increase of 1,219 average daily trips. Traffic impact mitigation fees and street improvements are required. The applicant is requesting an exception to the town code parking requirements. To support this request, the applicant submitted a parking analysis, and the town's traffic consultant reviewed this analysis. The consultant agreed that based on the shared parking methodology, the proposed number of parking spaces, 134, would meet the peak period parking demand. An initial study and mitigated negative declaration were prepared for this project, and mitigation measures are included in the performance standards. Mitigations address air quality, geology and soils, greenhouse gases, hazards, and noise and vibration. Town code states that the purpose of a plan development, I know that you've just had this discussion, is to provide for alternative uses and developments that are more consistent with site characteristics, to create an optimum quantity and use of open space, and to encourage good... good design. The planning commission shall make a recommendation for the planned development application to the town council, who will be the deciding, final deciding body. The applicant is requesting that one exception for the number of parking spaces. Besides that, the project was designed consistent with the commercial design guidelines, the Los Gatos Boulevard plan, consulting architect recommendations, and the conceptual development advisory committee comments. This concludes staff presentation, and staff is available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Savage. Questions? Commissioner O'Donnell, Commissioner Talisfor, and then Commissioner Erickson?
I have a question on the drive-through. When the negative declaration, page 13, it says... It's not, I'll say it again, page 13 of the negative declaration support says that in the past, drive-throughs were considered troublesome because of air emissions of idling cars. But then it concludes by saying, however, with improved emissions technology, it would now take thousands of idling cars to cause clean air standards to be exceeded. I'm wondering whether the staff had looked into that, because that would argue in favor of bringing back drive-ins like hamburgers and all that kind of thing, which doesn't sound like a good idea to me. But is it the staff's position that that statement is correct? It would now take thousands of idling cars to cause the clean air standards for that facility to be exceeded?
Yes, and that's the difference between the emissions of cars several, several decades ago and those of today. It doesn't necessarily mean by that statement that drive-throughs should be permitted generally. Certainly, emissions is only one factor that should be considered in drive-throughs.
Well, are the others only traffic issues, or are there any environmental issues?
For drive-throughs?
Yes.
They could be related to noise. Noise could be an environmental issue to consider, depending on which direction the drive-through is facing. You could also consider light or aesthetic issues as well that are covered within an environmental review, in the event that those headlights reflect on residential properties. And then, of course, outside of environmental review, there's always the character that the town would like to see.
Thank you.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Thank you. On site plan, I'm looking at Mr. Cannon's letter of January 6th, page five. And what I really want to know, where, because it was, my question has to do with a couple of letters we got, we from, received from neighbors that are adjacent to this area. But I have no idea where the adjacent neighbors are. I mean, I tried to drive down the street behind this, and I still couldn't tell, you know, exactly what the impact would be from these neighbors. Is there a way that we could see that site, so we know where the, I mean, I'm disappointed that we don't have that in here, unless I missed something?
Yes, I will direct you to that page if you would give me a few minutes to find it.
Thank you.
But I can take another question in the meantime.
Commissioner Erickson?
So, Ms. Savage, just trying to find the page with the chairs and jills, and so I'll ask Ms. Pravetti or Mr. Paulson a question. So I have a series of questions about the street adjustments and circulation issues there. Would it be better to ask those of the applicant or of the staff?
Thank you. Senior Engineer Trang Nguyen is here to answer questions related to the circulation of the streets. On-site circulation is best addressed by the staff, by planning staff, or the applicant.
Okay, thank you. I'll wait till the end and...
To first address Commissioner Talisfor's question, on Exhibit B of Exhibit 20. So those are the site plans that are dated May 30th. On sheet DR3, there is an aerial photo. I have it on the overhead as well.
Let me get there.
Okay.
Okay. May 30th, and where, again, was the page? DR3, I see it.
So if you look at the bottom of the page, you'll see adjacent buildings that are residential and commercial. Starting from the left, you have residential. You go over to commercial office buildings, and then you continue with residential.
It is a mix of both office and residential, so that, we, do we have any idea where the letter that we received, where, is that anywhere here?
Do you have the address of the letter handy?
Okay.
I can look it up as well.
It wasn't a desk item, it was included in the packet.
Okay, one moment.
I don't know where, though. It was an email.
105 Carlton Avenue, so that is the residential structure here.
Oh, which one?
This one here. Sorry. And it is difficult to see here, but there is an office building that forms sort of a wide L shape.
Okay.
And then to the right of that, there is an apartment building, 105 Carlton.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Erickson?
So to be sure I understand clearly, so, the reason this is a PD is because the general plan suggests PDs for parcels which are greater than 40,000, and the council's provided direction to, that PD, that developments of former automobile dealerships should be done with PDs. If I set those two aside for the moment, if I set those two aside, the only other reason this is a PD is because the applicant, the only reason that this would be a PD if those two were set aside, is that they're asking for a reduction in the parking requirements required by the town code, correct? So everything else they're proposing is consistent with all of the guidelines and the town code.
Correct.
Thank you.
I have a general question myself about the magnolia trees, but perhaps what we, should I ask about them? Can, are those going to be replanted anyplace else?
They're not, and it is a struggle to decide whether or not those trees should be removed. The arborist and staff did talks greatly about the magnolia trees. They're considered a high-water tree, which means they need a lot of water. And typically, especially not only in the town of Los Gatos, but in the valley, with our drought that we have now, and just our general low water availability, we do want to see more drought-tolerant plants. It would be difficult to do any landscaping around the magnolia trees that require a lot of water and have drought-resistant landscaping around those trees. The watering requirements would conflict.
I know this is rather out of the box, and you may not be able to answer it, but what would happen if our beautification committee took responsibility for watering those trees? And I understand there's a drought now, and there may be a drought next year, but the magnolia trees have somehow survived many, many years, and our town is known for the magnolia trees. So I'm just focusing this minute on thinking of a way to save those trees.
That can certainly be considered, and we would also encourage not only the beautification committee, but also our town arborist, to work with making sure that the condition of those trees stays higher, higher than lower.
So, okay, so I wasn't sure if we were able to take magnolia trees and put them into one of our parks, but it sounds like not, and it sounds like those are an awful lot of trees to take down.
It's certainly a possibility. It's, it's not easy. I'm not an arborist, so I couldn't confirm the likelihood that they would survive, but trees have been transplanted in the past.
All right. So, Ms. Savage, I have a number of questions about the conditions of approval, but rather than ask them now, I think if we could hear from the applicant, I might be able to ask the applicant some of these questions as well, all right?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, was there another question? No, I didn't miss it. Okay. All right. So according to our procedure now, we give the applicant 10 minutes, five minutes, sorry, 10 minutes, five minutes to address us, and then we hear public testimony, and then the applicant has three minutes to make a response, and then we close the public hearing. So Mr., is it Spunt? Yes, please step forward, sir. So again, when the light turns yellow, you're down to your last 30 seconds, all right?
Cool. Good evening, Madam Chair, planning commissioners. My name's Howard Spunt with Landmark Retail Group. I'm CVS Health's developer. We've been working on this project for about five years, and made our first little to the town in 2010. Since then, we've been working very closely with staff, the advisory board, and staff's architect to bring forth the plan that we have brought forth today. As staff mentioned, we do meet all the guidelines and standards for the current zoning, with one exception, which is the parking. And the reason we're asking for a parking reduction, the project does park per code for retail, but in order to allow some food uses, some small restaurants, we're asking for a reduction in parking. As staff mentioned, we worked very hard to get this project to work well on the site, and this is a relocation of the CVS down the street. I know there's been some comments about too many drugstores, and why do we need a drugstore? And I think CVS actually is called CVS Health, and they made a commitment to being a health provider in addition to providing pharmaceuticals. And they're the first drugstore to just recently outlaw the sale of cigarettes. So not only is it a great development, but I think CVS has proven to be a good neighbor, and will continue to. They also provide minute clinics with nurse practitioners in a lot of their stores. So I think, again, they're looking as retail is changing to adapt to the needs of the community. And what we're finding is communities are looking for more service-oriented uses and less goods, because plenty of goods can be got on the internet. And I think it's a tenant that's really looking to adapt, and would love to stay in the community and provide some of these additional services. I read the staff report, and I agree with what they've had to say, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Seack?
One question that has often been asked of me, and I'd love to ask you, is the services that you're looking to provide in the future, are they not able to be done in your current location?
Yeah, the current location's pretty old and pretty functionally obsolete. This would be a more modern facility, it would most likely include a minute clinic with a nurse practitioner. And that facility that they have currently is probably 20 years old, and the location, and the parking and circulation doesn't allow them to provide the goods and services they feel they could provide in this location.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
You have a mezzanine, I think, designed in that building?
Correct.
And that adds, I recall, over a couple thousand square feet?
2,400, yes.
And is that simply for storage?
Yes, and the previous design, when the building was off the street, was a perfect rectangle. It did not have the mezzanine, and it was closer to 16,000 feet. We moved the building to the street on the recommendation of the city's architect. Because the building's so inefficiently shaped, they had to add the mezzanine to make the building work.
Well, the mezzanine, it would seem, adds height to the building?
A little bit. If you look at the sections because of the roof slope, and I talked to the architect today, not as much as you would think, maybe a foot or two. And again, as far as the height goes, the maximum allowed by code is 35 feet. The majority of our building is 25 feet, with some articulation that reaches, I believe, 30 feet six inches. So we've worked to squish the building as much as we can.
So I'm wondering about, every foot counts on height.
Sure.
And if the mezzanine adds even a foot to the height, then you ask the question, could storage be elsewhere? And I guess the only place it could be if it's not in the mezzanine is below ground level. So I guess it is possible that one could put in something like a basement.
It's definitely possible. I haven't looked into, we haven't done it in the past, but it's something that we could look into.
Yeah, I'm not requiring, I'm just trying to get a feel for this, because the size of the building, particularly the height of the building, does cause some problems to me. So I, and I assume that you feel strongly that you need that, you need 2,000 square feet for storage of something. I don't know what it is.
Yeah, the operator of the store feels very strongly.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Talisfor, and then Commissioner Badami.
Thank you very much. So you, are you familiar with the Los Gatos Boulevard plan?
We've gone through it in depth, yes.
In depth. So can you tell us, then, how this building fits into that plan?
I think in the scale...
What was your idea in designing it for the Boulevard?
We worked very closely with staff's outside...
I'm sorry?
We worked very closely with staff's outside architect to lower the building as much as possible. We brought the building to the street, provide more pedestrian connection. And then we've connected the two buildings with trellises and planted walkways to create, again, the connection from the street around the CVS to the back building, to try to connect the buildings to the street, move the building closer to the street to make it more pedestrian-oriented.
Orientated. But are you familiar with the nodes that are in the, the idea of the nodes that are in the Boulevard plan?
Not really.
Back this one. Do you have that, can we, maybe we should do this later. We can come back to it after we get it up. See, I had another question, and I totally forgot what it was.
I can come back to you, Commissioner Talisfor. Commissioner Badami?
I'm going to follow up with Commissioner O'Donnell's concerns, and that is, I'm really concerned about the height, especially at the corner obscuring hillside views. It's a big problem in town. We get a tunnel effect on the Boulevard, and it's written into our town vision as one of our primary values that we cherish in a town. So that being said, is it possible to reduce the public area of the building, thus expanding storage area, rather than using the mezzanine? Is that a possibility for you, since you don't want to go underground with storage?
Yeah, I think the mezzanine can definitely be looked at, and I do understand that height is important, even if it's a foot or two. And again, we did work very hard, and we didn't look at 35 feet as a given. We tried to get the building, again, 10 feet below the maximum. Though we'd be happy to look at, different ways to look at the storage, maybe redesigning the building. It might end up making for a bigger building footprint, which would eliminate some parking, so there might be some, some give and take there.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
I take it that CVS has used a drive-through in other of their facilities?
Yeah, it's a very common thing for most of their drugstores, on a ground-up development. Some of the existing buildings they bought from Long's, they tried to retrofit, but they feel that, again, back to convenience and providing more services to customers. Your mother with sick children, trying to pick up prescription medication, it's a huge convenience. So it's not something that's used frequently, but it's definitely, in their mind, a very big convenience.
You have asked for the possibility of being open 24 hours a day, with the suggestion that you will not be open 24 hours a day to begin with, but in the future you might be. And I'm concerned about the driveway for a couple of reasons. One, headlights at night. As you come in, the headlights will be directed one way, and as you turn to go through the line, of course, they'll be turned another way. And idling or even driving cars at 2:00 in the morning perhaps wouldn't be so good for the nearby neighbors. So that kind of raises two issues. One, the 24 hours a day kind of thing, and two, what you can do, assuming for the moment that you could have a drive-through, to protect your neighbors. So those are two issues that I'm wondering what your thoughts are on them.
On the, on the 24 hour... On the twenty-four hours, as you mentioned, currently it's not planned for a twenty-four-hour store. What CVS does, they just like to have the flexibility. The current store is, I believe it's seven AM to ten PM, and I think Sundays it's eight AM to ten PM. So, you know, I think we could live with some extended hours in the beginning and come back later if we choose to do twenty-four hours.
Your deliveries, I didn't see any limitation, and maybe I'm just not remembering, limitation on the days of the week or the hours of the day for deliveries to your facility?
It's fairly common. Typically, they get one large truck a week, so we've worked with a lot of different cities on limitation of hours and days, and we're very open to that. We work with that with staff.
Thank you.
If I could ask just a follow-up question to Commissioner O'Donnell in terms of the drive-through, because even stores that are open twenty-four hours a day, their pharmacy is not open twenty-four hours a day.
Correct.
So are you saying to me that the CVS pharmacy will be open twenty-four hours a day?
No, just the store. So the pharmacy typically closes around nine, even on that store that's open until ten. It's keeping the pharmacist there, so rarely would the pharmacy be open later than nine.
So my question to you is the drive-through window, because the example you gave, which is one that I can relate to, having a sick child or even young children in the car and not being able to exit. So what would a person at ten-thirty at night, how would they go to a drive-through window to purchase what if the pharmacy, won't the drive-through window be connected to the pharmacy?
Yes, the drive-through window's only for the pharmacy. So for example, you can't get milk, or you can't get snacks or soda through the drive-through, it's just specifically for the pharmacy.
So when the pharmacy closes, the drive-through window closes?
Correct, correct.
All right, so that's something that I don't think we really understood. The second question I have, if I could, is I know in your March twenty-first letter, you said that neighborhood meetings would begin to take place, and I'm wondering how that has gone, how's that progressed?
I didn't do it, so that was an oversight.
Okay, so there's no neighborhood meetings. All right, thank you, sir, and Commissioner Talisfor?
Thank you. So a follow-up to the drive-through as well, is if the drive-through wasn't there, how many more parking spaces would you gain?
Maybe five, or I'd have to look at it, maybe five, maybe none, I have to, can I look at the plan real quick? I haven't looked at it.
Mr. Spunt, actually, what I'm going to ask you to do is, I think we'll move on and hear some public testimony.
Yeah, let's do that.
And then we are going to have you, you'll be the last speaker with us anyway, so this, even the public testimony might trigger some more questions for us.
Super, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to call Ingrid Oakley Girvan.
Thank you, and thank you for accommodating my evening schedule.
Thank you for being patient with our process.
So I've been listening to a lot of the discussion tonight, and I live not near this store, but I certainly frequent the Boulevard and live in a different end of town, more close to the North Forty. And I have to say, I'm still a little unclear about what community benefit will be provided with this massive super drugstore. I've heard we might have an NP, most likely, not definite, sounds like a sales pitch, no disrespect intended. I'm also worried about this end of town, this corner, I don't know if you've checked with Los Gatos PD on this, but there are plenty of vagrants and homeless folks that do congregate in that area, having something twenty-four hours, or they can go in and buy beer, I don't know exactly what's going to be for sale there, there's some concern about that. I think that should be looked into. So what services do the residents in this end of town really need? I am a resident on this end of town, so I think that I get to speak on this. I think we really have an overarching concern of walkability for all services. As pointed out earlier, global economy, retail items from drugstores can be easily ordered online, so again, why would we need such a big superstore? I'm confused. What we really need are boutique clothing stores, many more dining options, rooftop dining, outdoor dining, flexible dining plans. I've lived in Europe, walkability is massive, and in the summer you can put out outdoor dining from your restaurants, they take over part of the street, a few parking spaces, I know that might be a horror in Los Gatos, but just something to think about. We really need to pay attention to this end of town. We do not want to be Blossom Hill at Almaden with one big box superstore after another. I don't know why in downtown we don't allow these big box stores, we keep it quaint. So why is the Boulevard a stepchild? It should look appealing, we should plan it that way. It can't just happen by chance. It needs to function efficiently for the residents and provide the services that they need so that they don't always have to drive five, ten miles to somewhere else. Why can't I walk there and get the things that I need? Why do I have to go to other places, Campbell, or even to downtown Los Gatos, which is not walkable for me? Don't let this hodgepodge continue on the Boulevard. Really pay attention to the plan, think about all of these. I've heard a lot of folks say, what are we going to do with the old tiny little strip malls? This is all part of the planning, think about it thoughtfully. I'd like to hear a commitment by the developer to make sure they include specific other businesses in this facility. He's talking about some compromise with the drive-through, other parking spaces, footprints, the mezzanine. Let's talk about really having this location be the beginning node for a beautiful build-out on Los Gatos Boulevard that we can all be very proud of every time we look there, not another big dome.
Thank you, and don't leave. Commissioner Talisfor?
Thank you for coming down, I'm waiting. So it's proposed to have a drugstore there. Now, if the drugstore didn't go in, where is it that you go for items like that pharmacy?
So there's a Rite Aid right next to Whole Foods, which frankly is much more convenient for me to shop at. I can go to the grocery store and the drugstore at the same time with one parking. Right now, the CVS next to, not, to Lenardi's is very convenient as well. So I tend to go there if I need to buy kids' toy items, for example, stop at the Wooden Horse, you have one parking spot, you can walk right out to the parking lot, pop things in your car, and then go.
And just as a follow-up, so, and you mentioned other types of businesses besides restaurants. What do you see? I mean, sometimes boutiques in these little pocket areas or shopping centers don't really do well, because they're sort of, so what else could you see there besides that?
Right, right. Well, I mean, you do have, you do have a lot of schools in the local area, kids that certainly walk home, and they have certain shopping types of stores, you know, Forever Twenty-One, I mean, that's a box store, but you can make things look different, right? I used to live in Switzerland, and there were McDonald's there, but they required that they actually construct the outside of the building with this beautiful wood lattice. It was gorgeous. It did not look like a McDonald's, there was a little teeny tiny yellow M somewhere on the building, and that was the only knowledge, everybody knew that it was McDonald's, but it didn't, it wasn't garish, right? There's a difference of, and I think this town is one of elegance, and we should preserve that. The Boulevard right now, I mean, the other ends of town, when you come into them on Winchester, and you see, you know, the dumping ground that is the corner there where the Goodwill truck is, and then you see this Los Gatos Boulevard, it really is, it's a sad plight. It looks blighted, a lot of the area, and that's not really who this town is, but that's a very large welcoming portion. It's a big footprint of the town, and I think we should change that.
Thank you, thank you very much. And now I want to call John Holtgren and Deborah, I guess there'll be two speakers here. Not here, okay, Vicky Kramer?
I have a good map for you to see about where 105 is actually located. But it's not, you're just going to get a handout, I don't have any slides.
So what I need you to do is to introduce yourself and give us just a moment to get your paperwork.
My name is Vicky Kramer, and I've been a resident of Los Gatos for the last seventeen years, and the handout that you're receiving shows the outline of the proposed property, and you'll notice on the very bottom, there's a little red box, and that is the property line of 105 Carlton Avenue, and within that property line, you'll see our building, which is four apartments, and you'll see our backyard is right there on the property line. So now you kind of have a pretty good idea as to what residence they're talking about, okay? Next to us, that blank space, that is parking, and it was some offices right there. So the main group of people that live right here are right next to this proposed thing is my apartment. So what I would like to talk about just quickly this evening is I came up with some, a list. Number one, our biggest concern is security. I concur with John and Yvonne Zavaschi, they are the landlords, that is the email you probably were talking about, that's in Exhibit Seventeen in the packet and everything, that there should be security personnel surveillance devices to increase the safety around this proposed complex, because the increased traffic and people comes increased risk of theft. What are the plans, what are plans do you guys have in place for about, for security? I didn't read anything about that in all this paperwork with security. Number two, the hours of deliveries, I heard someone mention that earlier. It said in the documentation that I got off the website, eight AM to ten PM, with most of the deliveries between eight AM and five PM, and our landlords, John and Yvonne, wrote again that we request that no deliveries be on Sunday to preserve the peace and quiet for our tenants. Number three, request a sound wall, a seven-foot sound wall, preferably, I saw in Exhibit Seven, there was some mention of a six-foot CMU wall, I don't know what that is, I'm going to guess it's a sound wall, and I don't know exactly where the location of that is. Again, I'm new to reading all this documentation. Number four, what plans are in place to ensure that the lights from the parking lots in the buildings will not be an issue shining into our living rooms and our bedrooms? We've got a concern about that. Number five, from the staff report, the removal of twenty-two trees. We have three trees we would, do not want to be removed on that, the property. We request that all garbage cans be installed at least two-hundred feet away, not the one-fifty feet away. We have some issues about the days of week and the times that the construction will take place. We propose that the weekdays for construction are eight AM to six PM, and on weekends and holidays, none. Number eight, what plan is in place to notify the neighbors, especially tenants, at the start date of construction?
Ms. Kramer, I'm going to have to stop you, because your time is up, but you have submitted things to us in writing.
Okay.
So we know the direction you're going in. Now wait just a second, because we're going to ask you a question.
Okay.
Ms. Talisfor?
Sure.
Thank you very much. So have you lived there a long time, were you?
Seventeen years.
Okay. Was the car dealership in, in working, what am I saying?
Yes, the building right behind our fence, that was the mechanic's bays, and they worked on the cars, so we never really saw them, they had one door that would open out, and, and so we were, you would hear noises, but you, you know, they would, by five o'clock they were gone, and they didn't work on the weekends, and it was pretty quiet.
Okay.
So, yes, and other than that, you just didn't hear a lot of noises.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call Joseph, and it looks like Gemmasani?
National Avenue.
Okay.
Thanks for letting me speak, you know...
You need to identify yourself first, just for the record.
Sorry, Joseph Gemmasani, National Avenue.
Okay, and pull the microphone up to you, and then we're all, no, pull it up to you. There we go.
Okay. You know, I've been underwhelmed by this project since the very beginning. I think it's a very prominent location. If you're driving north in the Boulevard, there's no buildings there, that Nob Hill Building is so far tucked away, you really see this for like, at the first half, about a half a mile. And I think we need a beautiful building there, and I don't think this is a building that, to me, looks like Los Gatos, like it belongs in Los Gatos from the beginning. So no matter what Larry Cannon tried to do, or whatever, you can't make a very bad design from the beginning look something that'll fit into Los Gatos. I think if, like, if you're on Highway Nine, you see that First Republic Bank Building that's there now? I think that fits in perfectly. It wasn't always like that. The original design was a big box, modern building, people didn't like it. It came away with a beautiful building here, I say, start from scratch. He's got an architect from Oakland, maybe we need an architect from a small town, we don't need a big city architect. What was I going to say here? And, you know, they, if you look in your packet, there's three renderings here, at least in the rendering they did in November of 2013, it had a pitched roof, which softens the look a little bit and is more consistent. The general plan for Los Gatos Boulevard is to have some level of consistency. We've been trying to incorporate like, these old-world clay tile roofs on some of the buildings, you'll see like Panera Bread, the new medical building near Trader Joe's is going to have that, that Republic Bank Building, even the Walgreens has some of that. The pitch, I think a little pitched roof there will soften the look of it, make it a little bit more consistent, and they use old-world tile there, I thought, I thought it looked better. Now on this one, they took it away. I don't understand that, but building height, I don't think should be an issue for some articulation to make a building look beautiful, it's not like the whole building's got to be a pitched roof, I'm just saying on the corners. So please ask the architect to look at that, if they can, if they can at least put that back, if not, scrap it like they did the Republic Bank Building and start from scratch, get a whole new design. And again, it'll soften the elevation, make it more like, more like the general plan. I know I was going to say more here, but I, Panera Bread Building, by the way, with the pitched roof, is twenty-four feet.
Thank you.
You don't, you know...
Thank you very much. Hold on, any questions?
What was the...
Panera Bread.
The Panera Bread's got an old-world tile roof like they originally proposed, twenty-four feet.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Rusty DeHorn.
So thanks for the opportunity to speak, Chair and Commissioners, I'm Rusty DeHorn. I've lived in Los Gatos since 2001. Our residence is right across Los Gatos Boulevard from this development. Frankly, what got me here tonight, I've never addressed the Town Council or the Planning Commission before, what got me here tonight is when the, the sticks with the orange, I don't know what you call them, but that show the shape of the building, when they went up a couple of days ago, that got my attention. This, you know, and in the meeting tonight, I was stunned to hear that originally the building was off the street, and then our own architect decided to move it towards the street, which to me just seems crazy. You know, there's been mentions tonight about building height right up on the street and things like that, and so I just, this building is, you know, while it's, you know, I think the staff mentioned that the buildings to the east of it are taller, well, yeah, there's Good Samaritan Hospital, there's that Monstrosity Medical Building that's being built near Ace Hardware, but I went out there and stood there this afternoon, and I could not see a building anywhere around there in eyesight of this planned building that was that thirty-feet height that they're mentioning here. So I guess my first request would be, look at the height of this, and why is it up on the street? My second request is, the, you know, again, being on the Boulevard on the east side of town, we're feeling a little bit like the stepchild that somebody mentioned there. You know, there's, there's some open space, the car dealerships, they've come, that land has come available, and I just feel like, you know, the, the development choices that would never be approved in downtown areas and other areas of town are being shuffled out to our area of town. The medical building, the North Forty are of concern. So I would ask you to consider, you know, specifically the character of the surrounding buildings, the building height, and just generally, you know, look out for us out on the east side of town there. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments, no questions. Thank you again. Rhody Firth?
I wish I had a voice like his. I'm Rhody Firth, I've lived in Blossom Hill Manor on Orange Blossom Lane for fifty years. Today I spent a long time deciding how best to state my views about this proposed development. I want to stay positive, but the truth is, there's very little that is positive about this project for the people of Los Gatos. When I saw the story poles, I think that's what you call those things, I wondered why the, the building was so tall, or the buildings, and so close to the street. So I went to the Planning Commission and found out that one of the things that we're trying to do is make Los Gatos Boulevard pedestrian-friendly, and I didn't know that before. I think it's a fine idea, but I don't think it's ever going to happen. I think it's a fine idea, but I don't think it's ever going to happen. I mean, Los Gatos Boulevard is very, very long and very busy and I don't think it's ever going to become a pedestrian-friendly place. I also learned tonight that the building, I, I wanted to know why the building wasn't set back. And now I've learned this evening because they did originally want to set it back and the town asked them to bring it forward. The building proposed on the corner is obtrusive at 30 feet, six inches. I've been told at the Planning Department that the height is needed to hide air conditioning and other amenities. There must be some way to do that without destroying our view of the gorgeous hills. We do not need a tall, super 24-hour drugstore looming at us. The other proposed building on the lot is said to be an indoor shopping mall. I don't know what additional businesses we need on our end of town. Have any businesses signed up for this building? And according to the information tonight, no businesses have signed up for the building yet. I know this is a baby problem compared to the North Forty, but it's really important. Tree-lined streets are a thing of beauty and health. Buildings lined, building-lined streets aren't. I would really like you to send this project back to the drawing board. It's too massive, it's too close to the street. It doesn't look anything like the Los Gatos. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Marie Risto.
Hi, Marie Risto, 85 Broadway. I wanted to address three things. One is just as a resident of the town, I've known this building was coming and then when the story poles went up, I wish I had brought copies of the pictures, but if you've seen it, as you look from the Boulevard, this is a really important corner. It's beautiful, there's trees there. The Nob Hill Shopping Center sits back and you can see a beautiful vista of the hills behind it. And these buildings completely obscure that view. To say it's minor is an understatement. So, I do think that while we're looking for walkability, these buildings need to be shorter and they need to be set back. You can walk to it maybe from Los Gatos Almaden. This is on a corner and I think pedestrian accessibility can be reached a different way. But to totally blow out that view is just going to be a huge loss. It's a really nice view. I'm happy that there are other residents here because a concern I would have if I lived in that neighborhood and I'm glad people are addressing it, I can't as a downtown resident say whether a 24-hour pharmacy is needed there or not. We have one at Walgreens. I don't know if this town needs another. I think those residents have addressed whether they want this or not. And the other thing is a concern I would have if I were a resident of the terraces or the nearby neighborhoods. I know plenty of people from the terraces walk to Lunardi's. They also walk to the existing CVS. So, they will lose a valuable service there. And I don't know if they've weighed in or not and I don't know if that dovetails into the approval of this project or not, but I just don't see this building providing something special or necessary. And so, I hope that's taken into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Risto. Our last speaker is Mary Roach.
Good evening again. I'm Mary Roach. I've been a resident on Cherry Blossom Lane for 30 years. I'm a tree hugger. 22 protected trees. How protected are they when they're all going to be removed? I like the idea of moving them, but then Los Gatos, as I mentioned earlier, had put in two trees behind the Los Gatos Boulevard Police Station and those trees are dying for lack of proper irrigation and it takes water to get them started even in the drought year. I personally was raised in Santa Barbara, so I'm very fortunate. I've gone from beautiful Santa Barbara with its very structured planning department to come to Los Gatos, another beautiful place, but it's becoming unpleasant. And I consider this building to be a cookie-cutter hideousity. And it's nothing related to Los Gatos character. It's something that could be anywhere in the whole nation, maybe around the world. It's, it's, it's unappealing from, from any aspect to me, my eyes. It's too high, it blocks views, we've said that. It's too close, it makes a shoot light atmosphere. It, it blocks off the memorial tree right there at the corner, too. In addition, I see by the plans out there that there's ideas of putting cement around half of that oak tree. Well, there's water of the lawn, which is bad for the oak tree to begin with, not to mention the power lines again. But we're doing worse and worse to this poor tree. It's declining as we sit here. The, and then there's a boulder field of large rocks on an impermeable base around the corner of this proposal as it stands. Where else in Los Gatos do we have a boulder field on a cement platform to block, just, anyway? And the traffic increased by the, the number of visitors and drivers and whatnot and drive-through or not. And as I said earlier, with the North Forty development, more traffic is going to be coming around that corner, turning left to go down Cherry Blossom to get to the elementary school, unless heavenly help, we get an elementary school up at the North Forty. There's the minor obstruction of the hills. This is, as you've heard from many people, this is not minor. You have to change the entire logo of the town. There's no more greenery, there's no more hills, you can't even find the cats on the freeway anymore. So, it's not, and drive-throughs are not typical of our town. I know of two. We have Penny U's Laundry and then we have the one at Junk in the Box. That's it. We don't need any more. I think of this as CVS is just total hideousity and a real blight. And thank you very much. We don't need more food stores in town either.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Roach. No questions? All right. Well, I thought you were the last one, but now we have two more. So, we have Mindy Wellington.
I'm Mindy Wellington. I live on Cherrystone Drive in the Manor. I heard that this was on the agenda tonight and I saw the story poles and I can't believe the size. I originally thought, well, maybe they're putting one on each end to see which side people like better. But then I find out it's both and they're both huge and way too close to the street. But what I'm more disappointed about is just, it's just another thing that we don't need. We don't need more fast food restaurants. We don't need another pharmacy. We have plenty of pharmacies. I just feel like the Boulevard is starting to become any town, USA. The charm of Los Gatos on our end of town is just not there. We need something that's going to enhance life on our end of town, more restaurants, not fast food. I was at Viva last week and I was sitting outside eating with my family and neighbors are coming and going and we're all having a conversation. It was so nice. That's the only place to go. There's no other restaurant that isn't fast food on that end of town and it's really disappointing. I would like to see something more like that. And as far as walkability, I, I don't know that anyone would need to walk to a, a superstore pharmacy and definitely not 24-hour. I don't, just don't think that's needed. I think that as far as the nurse practitioner, we're getting a big, huge medical facility down the street. We have a hospital right down the street. I just, again, I don't think it's something that we need. And I think that we've been very careful about our development of the downtown and protecting those charming stores and restaurants and I would love to see more of that concern on our end of town. Less chains, something, you know, more unique things, something that will enhance life and provide something that we don't already have. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have two questions, Commissioner Padami and then Commissioner Talispor.
Thank you. So, outside of a restaurant, what other type of occupancies do you envision at that site that would serve your neighborhood?
You know, honestly, I feel like we have everything that we need. I know that people have talked about the fact that Whole Foods wanted to be bigger. I know that's a very busy grocery store that I think that could probably be bigger. But honestly, there's everything that we need. The only thing that we don't have is obviously we, we never have anything for the kids to do. There's no place for them to go. So, maybe something entertainment-wise, but really just dining options, someplace where you can walk and, you know, get a glass of wine. Anateca Downtown, you know, a lot of people go to Viva for, to sit outside, someplace to sit outside that isn't a chain, that isn't fast food.
Thank you.
That's probably really what we need.
Commissioner Talispor. You answered my question. Thank you. Thank you very much. And now, our real last speaker will be Carol Rosser or Roser.
I think everybody's said, my name's Carol Rosser and I've lived in Los Gatos since the 70s. I own a business that's in the Nob Hill Shopping Center. I live in the Manor and I've lived in the Manor since the 80s, so I've seen development. I understand the business aspect, I understand the community aspect, I understand what it is to live in the Manor and see our mountains taken away from us. My biggest concern is the traffic. Right now, in our center, it is hard to find a parking space. Years ago, you could pull in there and park, but now people are parking there and, and then to have, and I didn't understand PDs until tonight, but to cut back on parking on a new center that's being built and then expecting those people to park across the street, it's taking parking from us. And I invite you all to go into the Nob Hill Center or to go across the street or start at Lunardi's and just decide you're going to go to lunch, you're going to wa, and walk along the Boulevard on a busy day, try and cross the streets or walk down Los Gatos Almaden and watch the cars trying to come out of the Manor and meet with the traffic of people coming up to the Boulevard. And where I live on the Manor, which is part county, part city, which is Longwood, we are now a cutoff from Longwood over through Longwood to Lilac to Dahlia to Blossom Hill to Cherrystone over, or Cherrystone to Bloss, to Cherrystone to Cherry Blossom, over to the school, over to Shannon, over to Kennedy. And it's become a thoroughway of cars all day long and all night. And there, there are school people going back and forth to the private and public schools. There's worker trucks, there's individuals, there's families, but they're coming back and forth and it's become quite a thoroughfare. And what we moved there for was the neighborhood. So, you know, I'd like to keep the neighborhood and I think parking and traffic. And one of the speakers who's a very successful developer in this town said traffic wasn't our problem, it's everybody's problem. It, it is our problem and I think we have to address it and especially in Los Gatos where we're backed up against every other street's county, city on our end of town, it becomes a problem for everybody and it needs to be addressed, especially Los Gatos Almaden Road, which hasn't even been brought up. There's not one stop sign or streetlight. Stop sign is at National and then it's Los Gatos Boulevard. So, that's, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming this evening as well, for all of you. So, that was my last speaker card. So, now what we do with process is we allow the applicant to come up and address us for three minutes and then we can ask him questions. We can also, when we're completed with him, we can ask questions of staff and then we do our deliberations. So, that kind of gives you the sequence of what's going to happen now. So, Mr. Spunk, you want to come up?
I'm not sure in three minutes I can address all the concerns mentioned, but I'll try and do them pretty quickly in three quick categories. Technically, security surveillance. We can pick up two parking spaces if we eliminated the drive-through. We're open to a larger sound wall. Be happy to work with the arborist and staff on preserving trees, like in balancing drought, old trees and development. We're happy to look at that further. As far as traffic goes, we're doing three projects to improve traffic onsite. One's a bus turnout lane, one's adding a double left-hand turn from Los Gatos to Los Gatos Almaden, the other's upgrading the signal timing and do some modification to that. In addition to that, we're spending, actually writing a check to the city for $1 million for regional traffic improvements. So, we believe traffic is an issue and we're trying to do what we can to do our part. The rest of the issues are really philosophical issues and, you know, everybody wants different things. I like blue, my girlfriend likes green, my son loves red. We had pitched roofs with building back, we had a building front. And as a developer, I'm trying to balance the needs of my client, the needs of the city, the needs of the community and provide the best project we can provide. During the PED conversation earlier, you talk about process and, and expectations and rules. And when we bought this property, there were rules and rule was 35 feet. That's it. There was density restrictions. We've got 75% of our property open. There's only 25% buildings. So, again, philosophically, I do appreciate there's things that people would rather see here. I don't understand the super drugstore. This is the same size as 90% of the drugstores out there, so I don't know. I didn't bring that into the equation and I just think it's being overly used as this gigantic store, which is a typical average-size store. So, I'm very happy to answer any questions and.
Okay. I'm going to lead off on this. So, thank you, Mr. Spunk. And so, here's, I just want to give you my thinking and I'm going to ask you a question. So, my thinking is that mistake number one is you didn't meet with the neighborhood.
I totally agree.
Okay. And that is a big issue for me as a planning commissioner because neighborhood outreach is critical. Probably the comments this evening would have been cut in half if you had met with the neighbors and explained your concept.
I agree.
So, that's number one. Number two, we could go through the conditions of approval and, you know, I'd like to cut back on the hours and the drive-through, et cetera. But the fact of the matter is that I think we confused you with the design. I think that it's, we have a Los Gatos Boulevard plan that isn't clear and so you had the building set back, now you've brought it forward and it's, it, I find the mass of it overwhelming myself and yet I understand that you followed the rules. So, this is part of the complex nature of what is happening with us. We don't want the parking in front necessarily on the Boulevard, but in this case, when you bring the building forward and you put the parking behind, it causes a problem. So, I just want to make those statements and also indicate to you that I don't know about going forward with this project tonight because I don't believe you've gotten the neighborhood input that you need to have a successful project. So, I'm just stating that and follow-up with my commissioners, Commissioner Padami, Commissioner Talispor.
So, you mentioned Los Gatos as a city, but you need to keep in mind that we're a town and we're actually a small town and we're unique in character. So, I would focus more on our commercial design guidelines because the application we have in front of us doesn't come close. It needs a lot of work.
Commissioner Talispor.
Thank you. I have questions for you.
Great.
So, my first question, the one I forgot in the beginning, is would you characterize this building as a prototype building?
Definitely not.
Definitely not. And that would be because?
The traditional CVS pharmacy prototype has an arch over the entrance, it's all stucco. There's really not a lot of components of this building. Also, the prototype's a rectangle. This is a very odd-shaped building.
Okay. Thank you. So, then, oh, may I have some follow-up questions?
Sure.
So, how do you characterize this building as Los Gatos, especially with the surrounding?
That's a great question and I think I've heard a lot of stuff tonight. And again, when I drive through Los Gatos, the town, I see all kinds of eclectic, different architecture. So, I couldn't tell you, if, if you want to point to me a building that says Town of Los Gatos, but Cannon Group said, this is it. And then we drew it. He said, well, this is it. So, I'm really open to how we decorate the building. I'm, I'm not really sure.
How you decorate the building, which is sort of what it reminds me of, it looks like a series of boxes that you've decorated, which is a little different in the way that I think we like architecture. in the way that I think we like architecture, uh, approach here. But I do have a question. Uh, Mr. Paulson, do you have that, um, Boulevard photograph? The last, I think it's on the last page of the node, yes. Can we put that up on the overhead? This is what I would like, you said you're familiar with the Boulevard plan?
Yeah, actually, we hired two different architects to work with the city architect. They're much more familiar. I didn't bring him tonight, I, I wish I would have, so...
Okay. Alrighty, well then, you'll learn something, I guess.
Never too old to learn.
Nope. Can we enlarge, oh, good, thank you so much. So this is a node concept that is included in the Boulevard plan. And this was done many years ago, but I think it's probably the epitome of what we would like to see on the Boulevard. If we ever get there, we don't know. However, when we are approaching and having proposals come into us, we do, uh, this is what we would like to see, I mean, it's right there. It's an infill project and, um, the infill project is, I'm, and, and you're a PD and anyway, it's, I'm not gonna go into it. But if you look carefully at the bottom of this, uh, illustration, you will see that this is actually the cor- this node is representative of the, of Los Gatos Almeden Road. I don't know, can you see that?
Yeah, and our site's on the bottom, right, where all that parking shown?
Yes, well, that's, you know, that's a concept down the note, so what we're hoping...
Orientation, right?
Yep, yes. So what we are hoping is that when new applications come in, they're going to make every effort to, to, somehow address this and be compatible with it. The buildings that are around you now, across the street, you have the Nob Hill Shopping Center. Yes, it was probably built in the fifties, but it is set way back. But in the front of it is a very, um, large, uh, green area with trees planted on it. Across the street is an old Jiffy Market, nineteen-fifties. It's someday gonna be a great building and I'm hoping that they'll renovate it. But anyway, and across the street from that is also a Jiffy Lube. But the architecture of that is very, I think you would call it calm, subtle, for what the business is, which is surprising. So when we think about, or when I think about your building, I have to ask you, had you seen this before? Because what you've done with yours is move it up to the corner, which creates a canyon, which is, it's, right. I know you were told to...
On recommendation of, yeah.
I understand that.
I didn't spend four years...
But, uh, tonight, we've heard testimony from neighbors who were also complaining about the, the closeness of it.
Yeah, I did, trust me, I would've...
And to me, I, you need to tell me how it's compatible, or so, or Mr. Cannon does. I don't have to agree all the time with Mr. Cannon, so...
Okay, so Commissioner Talispor?
That's a question.
All right, we're gonna have Commissioner O'Donnell and then Commissioner Seack. And are these direct questions of the applicant? Because if not, we could have them sit down and have our discussion. Okay, go ahead.
Initially, you had the building set back, is that correct?
That's correct.
You were then told essentially by the town to move it forward, right?
That is correct.
Uh, I, I can tell you that, um, the discussion, uh, Commissioner Talispor just had, I do wonder how familiar you are with our Boulevard plan. Now, you say you had two architects who interface with the town. How familiar are you with the Boulevard plan?
I have seen that drawing before.
Okay, because, alright, so you feel that your building, as presently designed and thirty feet, six inches high, fits in with, with our goals, to have the hills, hillside visible and that kind of, that kind of thing? Do you think your building does that?
It's a great question, 'cause I drove the street a lot today, looking at how often are you able to see the mountains through the commercial corridor? And it's unfortunate, but it's a commercial corridor and it's continually blocked by buildings. So to, to single our project out, it's, it's a hard, like, yeah, I don't think our property allows for the views that are there today, the mountains, no I don't. But I don't know that, given the guidelines and the zoning of the property, we could build buildings there and not somehow block the mountains to the right. I don't, I, we've done our best to work to get the buildings as low as possible.
Let me ask you this fairly simple question. At thirty feet, six inches, that in part is dictated by your mezzanine. And I think you've indicated the potentiality of, of dropping the mezzanine and moving to someplace else. If you were to take, and the thirty feet, six inches includes some articulation as opposed to the true height of the building. What is the, uh, if you were to lower the building, how low and remove the mezzanine, what could you do with the height of the building?
I think it would be closer to, um, probably twenty-four feet plus, um, you might have some articulations of twenty-seven.
Is your articulation for equipment?
No, the articulation is to create, um, variations in the elevation.
Okay.
Both horizontally and vertically.
The Chair also suggested, and I think she's absolutely correct, there are a lot of things I don't like about your design. And I feel sorry that I think you've, in a sense, been whipsawed. And there's, not because anybody intended to whipsaw you, but that's kind of what's happened. But I don't like this building at all, and that doesn't help you for me to say that.
No, no, it doesn't.
And the Chair says, you know, "It would've been very nice had you talked to the neighbors." So I, I'm much more inclined to say, "Let's continue this matter." Because I would like to see you have a better handle on what is Los Gatos. The neighbors are complaining that there's this part of Los Gatos and there's that part of Los Gatos, and they're not happy with that part of Los Gatos. So it makes it difficult. And I don't know who you've been working with on the staff, but I would be very surprised if there's anybody sitting at this table that thinks this is a good design. And I don't mean technically. So at some point, I would like to make a motion that we continue this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Are there, no further questions of the applicant? So, um, sir, oh, I'm sorry, Marika, you did, sorry.
Actually, uh, yeah, you've heard several questions about design. I wanna go back to your actual usage. And, um, I, I don't remember if we've met prior, but I was sitting on CDAC when you first came to us. And even back then, I had asked the question of why move CVS? So you've heard some of the concerns of there's no, there's no need for another drugstore in that location. What, is CVS a done deal? Do you have to design for a drugstore, is the first question? And then the second is, what are opportunities that the neighborhood can have with you to discuss what the second building will look like and what will be used there?
Okay, um, first question, um, CVS owns the property. And again, it's about controlling their future. They're a tenant in the other space and they only have very limited options. And landlords expressed on many occasions wanting to get them out of there and expand the market. So their location's tenuous, they've acquired this property to control their destiny. In terms of uses, you know, this is another kind of slippery slope and tough subject because at the end of the day, the consumer controls who goes there. If the consumer wants to shop there, that tenant will flourish. And if the tenants believe there's consumers in the area, they'll go there. So, um, I can't promise you we're gonna do a boutique clothing store. 'Cause unless I can get a tenant who's willing to invest the money to be there, I can't make that promise. So far, um, we haven't had a lot of interest from soft goods. You know, I think, um, banks, um, Corner Bakery's very interested, um, Fast Casual Foods, very interested. But boutiques, I think, belong more in the downtown area. And I think, you know, back to uses, a lot of cities have, a lot of towns and cities, I'm learning. You know, they define certain areas for certain uses. In this particular case, you know, the, the zoning allows for broad. And we kind of let the market determine, um, what use will be there. But, look, if, if there are suggestions of tenants to go after, we'll go after them. I mean, if you give us a list and say, "Please talk to these ten people," I promise you we'll talk to them. We'll report back to you, we talked to, you know, Director of Real Estate, they wanna be here, they don't wanna be here. And if they don't, I'll tell you why. And if the community comes out and talks to these tenants like they've talked to you, you know, they can make a change. You know, a lot of these tenants don't believe, um, they can be successful here. And it only takes, um, you know, ten people, twenty people, thirty people, and they read their emails too. So I think it's a cooperative effort to bring tenants in that everybody wants. But then, hey, it's an economic decision. And if a person doesn't wanna invest in a boutique store there, there's nothing I can do to make that, that happen.
Thank you, Mr. Spunk, for your, uh, comments. And, um, and we are very sensitive to, I mean, we know that it's market-driven. And we appreciate that and also respect the fact that the owner, um, wants to put the drugstore there and believes there's a market for it. It's a large corporation, they've done their demographics. So even if it goes in, it needs to go in in a neighborhood-friendly way.
Absolutely.
So, uh, and that may be right down to the kinds of goods that are sold within the drugstore. It might be a little out of the box for CVS. So I don't wanna preclude anything. All I want to do is tell you that we do respect the right of the property owner. And now we're gonna also have to have you take a look at the neighborhood and work with them. Because neighborhood compatibility, you'll hear it over and over, is, is just primary for us. It's a primary concern of ours, as well as design.
Can I ask a couple of questions real quick? So, um, I'm happy to work with the neighborhood and I do apologize, um, that wasn't, um, I just, I just ended. The, the last two, um, submittals we made to the city are full submittals, um, water quality, grading. And what I'd like to suggest is, after me with the community, to bring in some kind of study drawings. Because each time we submit a full package, you know, it's sixty, seventy thousand dollars. We've done it twice now.
But we can absolutely appreciate that. So what I'm gonna have you do is I'm gonna have you sit down because Mr. O'Donnell, um, has a motion that he's going to make. And part of what you have said would have been part of what I would've said anyway, so...
I appreciate it.
So, okay, oh, alright. And Commissioner Birch wants to say something to you as well.
Um, I, I only wanted to say that, um, as we're obviously discussing on continuing it, that I, I would like to highlight a few items that I think I've picked out from our conversation to give you directionally because your architect is not here. I think there's a few things that you need to look at. And I do apologize that you were, you moved the building back and forth. But if you do drive down that area, and I live very close by, so I drive this often, although there's been some discussion of moving buildings closer to Los Gatos Boulevard, that is really not much of a standard in that area. If you've noticed, all those, all those developments are set back. Along with that, um, I think you've also noticed that the architecture on a lot of the buildings through that are actually quite simple. Um, we don't have a lot of gingerbread or flashy buildings. They have a simple roof line, not a lot of the various iterations that you've put in. And I think that those would be some aspects that you could pick up from, you know, you can see the Trader Joe's, the Nob Hill. Yes, all, all through that area, you can kind of see a very simple roof line.
I took a picture of that today.
Yes, and, 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 you know, I know that you've got, for example, the issue with the roof screen. You can do that with the pitched roof. The pitched roof, it can ask as your roof screen for your mechanical equipment. Um, and obviously height, height is gonna be a very big issue. And I would like, um, the corporation to invest in Mr. O'Donnell's suggestion of a storage being underground and that mezzanine is not necessary. And it's going to cause you an amazing amount of issues with your neighbors.
Yeah, what's, what's interesting is when the building was back, I didn't have a mezzanine, it was short, I mean...
And I, we, we, we were all gonna apologize that you went through this.
There's not, I, look, this is the process and there's our first hearing. And, uh, you know, these things take time, so, you know, I appreciate the feedback.
Yeah. I, I have one last thing that I'm going to ask you to very, very strongly, please look into. We don't need any more quick turnaround restaurants down there.
Okay.
I think you heard one of, um, the speakers discuss the restaurant Viva. If you have not been there, please go visit it. What you have right now has a very, very tiny front patio as you redesign this. I think you have an amazing opportunity here to put in something that, we don't need really high-end, but somewhere in the middle that has great outdoor seating, you will find, all the neighbors will flock to it. It is something that doesn't exist on that side of town, you could fill a niche. So I would ask you to, I know what you're saying about people that move in, but I'm telling you, there will be people that will be interested.
Yeah, and, and you guys know the operators, so if there's a restaurant, operators you work with or know in town, have them call us. We'd love to...
You got it.
Love to talk to them.
Okay. So I just wanted to, to leave you with a little bit of bullet point guidance that you can provide to your architect.
All right, so Commissioner, so sir, are you okay? Have we answered?
Great, thank you so much.
Okay, all right, so thank you for your time and patience. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes, I, I just wanna preface this, this motion by saying, we have not discussed this evening a lot of things, just tangentially. So what we're talking about right now is design. But you probably got the flavor of hours of operation, night work, night stuff, deliveries, not on Sundays and those kinds of things. We didn't really get much into that, but hopefully you got the flavor of that. Uh, I'm gonna make a motion that we continue this matter to a date certain, which we'll discuss in a minute, to allow you to come up with some design drawings, not full sets, design drawings. Now, I'm also going to encourage the staff to make clear to you whether or not this setback, and we've always setback simply so, not setback, set forward, so that the Boulevard doesn't have a bunch of cars that look like a used car lot. That's always been the philosophy. Now, maybe there's some reason in this particular lot that that not, ought not to be the philosophy. I don't know. So I'm really asking the staff to look at that. It, it is a good thing not to have your Boulevard look like a, a parking lot or a used car lot. But there's some reference to the, the market right across and how set back that is. So I just want them to look at that. So we're not asking you to spend sixty or seventy thousand dollars on drawings. Uh, but we are asking you to meet with the neighbors, to be cognizant of their concerns. We're not telling you what uses ought to go in that building, that is not our business. We can tell you what we, what we all like, but it's not our business to tell you who your tenants are. So I'm gonna move that we allow you the time to come back with some drawings, to work closely with staff. And I would ask staff to give me a date. I, I don't know how much time he will need, but I would think we're talking about at least thirty days.
So we need a, a second before we can talk to staff.
I wonder if you want a date in the motion or not? Either way is okay with me, yeah?
Yeah, we usually wait till the end, Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Badami?
I'll second the motion.
All right, any further discussion? Commissioner Seack?
Um, I'll be supporting the motion. One thing that I would like to, to add on to the discussion of trying to eliminate the look of the parking, what we've done with other developments is we've used significant landscaping to help mask that parking lot look. And there was a discussion on Whole Foods. And if you look at how that development looks like, there's a lot of landscaping, there's a lot of trees. And you can mask and soften the look of that parking lot. The other thing that was suggested was, um, understanding that you've submitted several plans. If you have those plans still, it might be beneficial and cost-effective for you to actually bring them back. And perhaps maybe we can find something there that, that we haven't had a chance to see yet. So it might be helpful for you to share that with staff as well.
Just made, I, I would point out that Whole Foods, that shopping center, of course, the buildings are set back. So that's why I'm asking staff to take a hard look at what variations, if at all, we have on the, the single concept of we don't want a parking lot. And yet, we cite as a good example, Whole Foods, which has all the parking in front, so...
Commissioner Erickson?
Just have a couple of observations that, that I would make, we have many chances to say, that have to do with the potential site and layout of the place. So I would not be inclined at all to support any reduction in the maximum required parking in this. And the reason why we have significant issues, those of us who live in that part of town, make that the, both in the Cornerstone Shopping Center, there is supplemental parking on a regular basis in the street behind. There is also supplemental parking in what I would call the Trader Joe's Shopping Center on the street behind. So I don't know what the, you know, I don't know whether we reduce the parking because of shared parking concepts, but it would seem like to me, we don't, we need to apply the town code to maximize the parking there. The other concern that I have is that if I understand correctly, and we don't need, need a response to this tonight, if I'm interpreting the drawings correctly, we've created an intersection without acknowledging that it's an intersection with the way the present layout is. So we're... So where Pearl, where Peach Blossom, I believe that's the name of the street, I believe, comes out, we perfectly aligned the entrance and exit across Almaden, Los Gatos Almaden Road from that street, which effectively makes an intersection without it being, being acknowledged by the drivers as an intersection. That invites all kinds of cross traffic from this place across to that street. And so it seems like to me, one needs to look carefully at whether, if we're, if we're going to create an intersection, we need to acknowledge that it's an intersection and figure out what the implications of that are. Then if someone who frequently walks and rides his bike in this particular area, I'm also concerned about how, as you, we've got, if part of the Boulevard plan is to make that area pedestrian and bike friendly, you have a bikeway which just ends. It ends at the quote, intersection that we've just created with, and I'm not sure if I'm riding my bike on that bikeway, what I'm supposed to do at that point in time. Because as Mr. Paulson points out to me periodically, when I ride my bike on the sidewalks, I'm violating the law. So he hasn't sicced the police on me yet, but I expect that to happen any day. So I don't know where the bike riders go. If they just stop and have to walk. So there's, there's a whole series of circulation issues in that area that I think need to be looked at carefully by the staff, too.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Thank you. And just real quickly, I would, I'm encouraging you to take a particular look at use of materials and what's around there. And perhaps what I saw in your drawing wouldn't be appropriate. One thing I did like was the use of awnings. I do question the floor to ceiling windows, only because I'm not sure of the purpose of that. Because when you're driving by, you're not going to be looking in there. And I, you know, I don't know if it's for seeing product, but it's going to be hard to do that or what it's for. But I would be, I don't know, I'd just be careful about the floor to windows, floor to ceiling windows.
All right. I think we've given a lot of direction to staff and to the applicant. So let's take a vote, all in favor of the motion to continue?
Aye.
It passes unanimously. And Mr. Paulson, what are we looking at?
The challenge is you're only going to have one meeting in November, which is going to be November 12th, given the holiday. I don't know how quickly the applicant is going to be able to pull together some of the neighbors to meet with them, to turn that around. There's always the option to put it on that agenda. And should that agenda either already have items that take too long and/or they're not ready, we can continue it to the next date, or we can just schedule it now for the December 10th agenda.
I'd like to schedule for December 10th. And that makes more sense because I do think that neighborhood meetings, meetings, plural, need to happen. And also meetings with staff. All right. And what I would ask the applicant, by the way, the Chair is asking the applicant to bring the architect to the next meeting. All right. Commissioner Talisfor?
I just have one, one thing to ask of the applicant as well. When I was out visiting the site, I noticed that there was a lot of broken glass and there was a, it looked like a mechanical room that was open and things were pulled out on the side, on the back of it. It looked like people had been there abusing the place. Can that be taken care of? So I don't want to, you don't have to answer, just, thank you.
We can make a note to staff that they should be talking to the applicant. And yes, Mr. Schultz, you wanted to...
Since I haven't talked, I figured I better. Let's have, let's have another motion, just to make certain, because you do have to continue a date certain, and you didn't have that in your first motion. So if we can have the motion to...
That's what Commissioner O'Donnell asked me, and I said we could do it afterwards. So, okay. All right, so.
I'll make the same motion with the date in service.
Okay.
To December 10th.
To December 10th, all right. And the seconder agrees?
Yes.
So now we are all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. Ms. Pervetti, do you have a report for us?
I do, thank you very much. On September 16th, the Town Council heard testimony regarding the North Forty specific plan and decided to ask staff to continue the matter in order to provide some additional information. We are busy trying to collect that information and we're targeting December 2nd to return to Town Council. Council has also approved the Knowles planned development, which you saw earlier this year. So that has now gone through both its first and second readings, including last night. Last night, the Town Council heard the Highland Oaks paint color issue. You recall, that's the light reflective value consideration. They read very keenly and closely that the hillside guidelines talk about exterior color from a broader perspective. So they've asked us to work with the applicant regarding a methodology for examining exterior color vis a vis the 30 LRV, as opposed to just paint color. And so we will be doing that and returning to council. They also, although not land use, it's related to land use certainly. Last night, council also discussed cut through traffic and some different options, as well as complete streets. So we will be applying for a grant to help the town complete a bicycle master plan, as well as a complete streets plan. And as you know, how we design our land uses to go with those street improvements will be really important. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Pervetti. Are there any other commission matters? Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.